All right, everybody, let's get started on time. Good morning. Welcome to the September 17th, 2021 virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals. My name is Timmy Knutson and my pronouns are he/him/his. I'm the chairman of the zoning board of appeals. This past month, we honored the 20th anniversary of September of the September 11th attacks on our nation. President Obama once said that even the smallest act of service, the simplest act of kindness, are a way to honor those we lost, a way to reclaim the spirit of unity that followed 9/11. I think that notion of service extends to honoring all types of losses, whether national, local, personal, or other. So my only PSA today is to encourage service of all kinds across the city for those on this call. This could be community service, small kindnesses, and/or just getting vaccinated. And it's something Chicagoans are super good at, so let's keep it up. First, I'd like to take judicial notice of the fact that on August 20th, 2021, the governor of the state of Illinois signed a disaster proclamation declaring all counties of the state of Illinois a disaster area due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. This disaster proclamation is in effect until September 19th, 2021. Thus, Section 7E1 of the Open Meetings Act has been met. Second, I am making a determination that pursuant to Section 7E2 of the Open Meetings Act, that an in-person meeting of the board is not practical or prudent. Similarly, I'm also making a determination pursuant to Section 7E5 that because of the disaster declared by the governor, it is unfeasible for at least one member of the zoning board of appeals, or its chief administrative officer, or its chief legal officer to be physically present at the meeting place, inasmuch as there is no physical meeting place. Third, this meeting will operate under the emergency rules governing the conduct of remote public board meetings, and provisions for remote public participation, promulgated first by my predecessor and now by me, and which are posted to the board's websites. In line with these emergency rules, today's meeting of the zoning board of appeals is a virtual meeting that is being simulcast to the general public via livestream. It is also being recorded. We've established these virtual hearings in keeping with the governor, the general assembly, the mayor, and city council's goal to continue government functions while maintaining transparency and public safety. But there are technical limitations to this format that we must collectively manage, particularly with respect to the presentation of new evidence during a hearing, the ability for applicants and objectors to resolve objections or amend proposals during the hearing, and the participation of large numbers of people. As a result, any material to be presented to the board, whether by applicants or members of the public, was required to be submitted in advance of the meeting. And in addition, everyone wishing to testify at today's hearing, whether on behalf of an applicant or in opposition, was required to register before today's hearing. For those who do not regularly appear before the board, I will go over a few things. Number one, we are operating under the emergency rules. So for all applicants, objectors, and their attorneys, if you did not send us your exhibits by the cutoff date in time, you will not be able to reference them. Number two, all applicants will be listed as attendees within the Zoom meeting until your matter is called. At that time, you will transfer to a panelist. There will be a short switch over where you will lose the feed, so don't be surprised by that. Number three, once you are set as a panelist, please present your case. Board staff will be presenting the PowerPoint exhibits for everyone as we normally do, so you will not need to manage sharing your screen. Number four, please be mindful of background noise, and please mute yourself when you are not speaking at all times, including right now. Number five, in addition, please note that we have a court reporter preparing our record. So it is important that two people do not speak at the same time. You might see me muting if that happens. Number six, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream. This will cause audio interference. Let me repeat, if you are an active participant in this meeting, please do not watch the livestream in tandem. Number seven, please make sure you identify yourself whenever you are speaking. This goes for attorneys, applicants, members of the public, and board commissioners. Since all of us are remote, we and our court reporters cannot always see who is talking at any given time. I will also be administering oaths for each witness individually to accommodate for this. Number eight, if an applicant or anyone in opposition to the application has any technical issues presenting their case, and it's unable to proceed, we will attempt to continue the matter until the end of the call to create time to resolve these issues. If unsuccessful, we will continue the matter until a subsequent meeting. Number nine, after your matter matters are concluded, please leave the Zoom meeting. If you are interested in continuing to watch our meeting, which we always hope that you are, I encourage you to watch the livestream, which is accessible from the website of the zoning board of appeals. Fourth, our amended rules of procedure that we adopted last month are now available on the board's website. I encourage all attorneys that regularly appear before the board to make sure they download a copy of the updated rules of procedure. Fifth, I hereby designate alternate member Ann McDonald to serve in place of regular member Zurich Esposito for this meeting. As some of you may recall, Ann was here in June, and we were very happy to have her. As our second alternate was unavailable to attend this meeting, I am exercising my authority under our rules of procedure to again designate Ann. So let's welcome Ann once again. Okay, now I'd like to call this virtual meeting of the zoning board of appeals to order. I will take a roll call of the commissioners to establish quorum. Commissioners, after I call your name and you state that you are present, please verify that you can both hear and see me. Commissioner Saul.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Great. Commissioner Sanchez.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonald.
Present, I can hear and see you.
Last but never least, Commissioner Toya.
Present, and I can hear and see you.
Great, I am present, so quorum is established. The minutes of last month's meeting have been distributed. Unless there are corrections, I move that we approve the minutes as distributed. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved as distributed. I move that we approve today's agenda. Commissioner Toya seconds. Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
I vote yes, they're approved. Okay, now we're going to take continuances and withdrawals. So I have a few that I believe are occurring that have come in somewhat recently, so let's go down the list, and then I'll have a few notes for others. So first up on my list is calendar number 367-21-S. Is Nancy Radzovich on the call?
I'm sorry, I'm here.
Great. Nancy, let's just get you sworn in now, because I think we'll see you a few times today. Can you state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely. Nancy Radzovich, I'm an assistant commissioner for the zoning bureau at the city of Chicago.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, so my understanding on 367 is that the Department of Planning and Development has requested a continuance because some work needs to be done.
367-21-S, I thought it was the attorney, Sarah Barnes, that had requested that continuance, but it is because we are working together to... We had noted some concerns, and they're trying to get responses.
Oh, great, and I see Counselor Barnes on as well. Hi, Counselor. So is that your understanding as well, Counselor?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chairman. That's correct. We received some feedback from the Department of Planning and Development regarding the site plan and operations, so we're gonna take some time and work on those, but we will be ready in stanter, so per the board's convenience, we'll be ready to go.
Great.
But we are asking for a deferral today, please.
Great, wonderful. So we'll be pushing matters to November 19th, 2021, two-month continuance, and this is for calendar number 367-21-S, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, how about any representative for calendar number 378-21-D? I see attorney is Robert Gamroth.
Chairman, will you please also always say the address when you do the numbers as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so this is 378-21-D at 5035 West Lawrence.
And they're just asking for that on 378, not 377?
Yep, 378. So, you know, maybe we'll deal with it, because someone is raising their hand, actually, Tom. Yeah, Chris Alekis, who I believe is the applicant, can we get Chris promoted?
I'm on as well, Mr. Chairman. I was muted, my apologies. Rob Gamroth, attorney for the applicant. We are requesting to withdraw that variation request in closely working with DPD to enhance the site plan. The need for the variation was obviated, so we will just have the special use request today on the calendar.
Okay, great. So we will withdraw that, and on the record, again, it's 378-21-D at 5035 West Lawrence, but we'll see you later today on the special use.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so for calendar number 387-21-S and 388-21-Z, and these are at 1549-59 West Roosevelt Road. And I know, I don't know if we have the applicant on this one, but I know there's been some discussion with the with DPD, so Nancy, if you're still on, if you could give us a little bit about this one as well.
Yeah, and Tyler Manick, who's the attorney, is on. He had alerted us a few days ago that they were going to be requesting a continuance. We've been working on some revisions to the plans.
Great, yeah, and I see Tyler on as well.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We're requesting a continuance, just to resolve some comments.
Okay, great, so we will continue calendar number 387-21-S and 388-21-Z at 1549-59 West Roosevelt Road until November 19th, 2021, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you. Okay, next up, any representative here from calendar number 395-21-D at 1512 North Hoynes Avenue? And I believe this is Counselor Tom Moore.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, yeah, we can. Okay, so Brian, would you please state your name and address?
Yes, for the record, my name is Brian Pellraine, Alderman staff for the Second Ward. On behalf of Alderman Hopkins in regard to 395-21-Z, it is requested that the matter at 1512 North Hoynes be deferred in order to give further opportunity to the applicant and neighbors to come to resolution.
Okay, great.
And Mr. Chairman, yes, I am here.
Okay, Tom, thank you very much. So Brian from the Second Ward just stated the continuance request. Is that your understanding as well, and do you feel the same?
Well, yes, I've talked to Brian the last couple of days, and I've also had a notice from some objectors, attorneys, who said they were going to ask for a continuance. So I alerted my people that we probably would not be going forward today.
Okay, great. So if there's a couple objectors, of course, just do everything you can in the next two months to find compromise where there's opportunity for compromise. So this one, everyone, is calendar number 395-21-Z at 1512 North Hoynes Avenue, and it will be continued until November 19th, 2021, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while I'm here, may I raise another one?
Yep, you're actually next on my list, so go right ahead.
Well, so number 262-21-S, 1326 West George is on the continuances, and at this time, I'd ask to withdraw it.
Okay, is that, Tom, is that 262-21-S and 263-21?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry, both of them. This is a situation where there is a historical problem with the curb cut, and it has to be resolved with CDOT, and that'll take some time. And we already continued it once, so respectfully, we'll withdraw it, and if we can resolve the problem, we'll come back.
Thanks, Counselor. So for everyone on the call, again, this is 262-21-S and 263-21-C at 1326 West George Street in the 32nd Ward. All right, Counselor, I've also, while you're here, want to raise with you a question mark, I have related to 399-21-Z at 662-64 West Wellington?
Yes, sir. We're ready to go on that. My understanding is we have our witnesses prepared, and my understanding is Alderman Tony wants to be on the call as well.
Okay, great, thank you. So 399-21-Z will go forward with some opposition.
I think we've resolved some of the opposition, and as you'll hear, we've worked very hard at doing that.
Okay, good, always appreciate it. So next up on my list, I have calendar number 409-21-S. This is at 9207 South Phillips Avenue. Is Tolar Berberian on, or is it on? Ah, yeah, Tolar, I see you raising your hand, so we'll get you promoted. Okay, Tolar, let us know. You might be unmuted, so let us know.
Sorry, good morning.
Because I see you. Morning.
Hi, yes, so we have requested a continuance for the special use on this matter. We are awaiting some additional information from our appraiser, which we will submit together with the findings of fact for our special use. So we'll have to have that heard at a later date, but we'd like to move forward with the variation.
Okay, good, yeah, that was my clarifying. So you're requesting continuance for 409, but we're going forward with 410.
Correct.
Okay, great. So we're hearing continuances for this meeting in November 19th, 2021. And again, everyone's on 409-21-S at 9207 South Phillips Avenue, only the special use. And we'll hear it November 19th, and no further notice will be given.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, see you later today. Okay, next up, calendar number 203-21-S at 2734-58 North Cicero.
Chairman, I think I saw the Alderman on earlier, too.
Okay, yeah.
I'm still here.
All right, Alderman, are you speaking on calendar number 203-21-S?
Chairman, I'm here. I'm waiting for the representation. Nick Fatikas to go on, but I'm in support of this application.
Okay, so one second. So Alderman, Alderwoman Austin, we'll get to you. I think this matter relates to Alderman Cardona.
Okay.
Okay, Alderman Cardona, I'm sorry, can you repeat that for 203-21-S?
Yes, so what we're seeking is a special use for this property for 2734-58. And I know this attorney, Nick Fatikas, is the attorney on record. So if he's on, I would like to start this or wait till to be heard.
Okay, and Nick, feel free to speak. We had a note that this will likely be continued, because I think there's been conversations that Department of Planning and Development, we can get to Nancy after Nick, needs some more information.
We were actually able to resolve those issues with the Department of Planning. We got our confirmation email from Patrick Murphy yesterday, and then I actually spoke with Nancy about 50 minutes before today's hearing. So we believe we have support based on the revisions that we've made. And I believe there's one or two conditions that we have absolutely no issue with, and we'll incorporate into our presentation so that the board understands what additional information would be required at the time of permit. Again, I don't want to get into the details of the case, but I believe it's all been resolved, and I defer to Nancy, or ask Nancy to confirm.
Okay, and Nancy, go right ahead.
I'm new. Yes, we... Yesterday, we worked through the final kind of issue that we were trying to resolve on the site plan. And as Nick indicated, we spoke this morning about the, just a couple of the things that we've added as conditions, and they're amenable to that. So everything's ready to proceed at this point.
Okay, great, yeah. So Alderman Cardona, I think it sounds like everyone is in resolution of this being heard today. So we will hear you all later on in the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for coming. In few shortly. Okay, so for everyone on the call, just to clarify, calendar number 203-21-S will go forward today. All right, how about calendar number 274-21-S? And this is at 7401 South State Street. Do you have anyone here for 204-21-S? All right, sorry, 274-21-S, Guaranteed Investments Incorporated. Okay, so, and Nancy, I'll have you speak on this as well, because I think we've got resolution on our end, so go ahead.
Yeah, so we have been working with the attorney on this one, which is 7401 South State is the address for the application. There's some additional information that we had requested from them, and they're working on pulling that together. And they're concurrently working on getting their second application with the ZBA staff. So when we had spoken earlier this week, the attorney, Karen Shaw, had indicated that she was going to request a continuance on this. So I'm not sure if you see Karen Shaw anywhere. But that was my understanding, was that the applicant was going to request a continuance, but we were in agreement on the continuance.
Great, yep, and that is my understanding as well. So I don't see Karen, but we're gonna, just on the record, continue this matter. Again, it's 274-21-S at 7401 South State Street until December. And that meeting will be held on, one, two, three, December 17th, 2021. And I think that the applicant is aware that if they're not prepared at that meeting, we will be either dismissing or asking them to withdraw. All right, a couple more, everybody. So next up, 305-21-S and 306-21-Z, both at 67 South Holstead Street. Does anyone here from the Community United Development Group?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yep, morning, Counselor. So this is Paul Copac, correct?
Correct. This is Paul Copac. We met with Alderman Sawyer, we had a community meeting. Alderman Sawyer's asked us to continue this matter so that we can have more of the community participation, and we've agreed, so we would ask for the earliest possible date.
Okay, great, thanks, Counselor. So, yeah, I would just encourage you to keep conversations with the Alderman, and hopefully, everything can be worked out prior to... Coming back in front of us on November 19th, 2021. So, yep, thank you.
Everybody be well.
You too, Paul. So for calendar number 305-21-S and 306-21-Z, we will be continuing until November 19th, 2021. No further notice will be given. Okay, so next up, we've got calendar numbers 400... Give me a second. 400-21-S and 401-21-Z at 12701 South Holstead Street. John Pukarski, let us know if you're on for this one. Oh, and Alderperson Austin, I think this is your matter, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Do you want to go ahead and speak on it?
Okay, there we go. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. This matter is at 127th and Holstead. It will be a gas station. The individual that is producing this also has one in my ward at 103rd and State Street. Katie worked on this one as well, and we're hoping that they will be good neighbors to the community of where they're going. So if I may humbly ask for a passage of this.
Okay, so you are asking, you're voicing your support. Alderwoman, just confirm?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, yeah, thank you, and thanks for coming today. I want to let John Pukarski speak, because I think this one will be continued. So let's get John on, and then we can see if that's the right move to make. John Pukarski, are you on?
Mr. Pukarski, you are unmuted.
Okay, let's see, John, is your... I see you on and I see you unmuted. Is your sound not working?
Testing, one, two, three, are we...
There you go, John. We've got you, we've got you.
Okay, yes, this is 400-21-S and 401-21-Z. While we thank Alderman Austin for her appearance today, we have some final problems to work out on this matter. So we would ask that it be continued.
Okay, great, and I know on this one, Counselor, there's some objectors. So I just want to encourage that in this two-month continuance period, you guys work together to the extent possible with good communication lines prior to coming back to us. So Alderwoman, if you are still on, does that continuance make sense to you?
Very acceptable, sir.
Okay, great, then I'm not going to... Okay, great. Then I'm not going to, we're going to continue this. We're not going to speak about it at all on the merits. And again, this is calendar number 400-21-S and 401-21-Z will be hearing on November 19th, 2021, and no further notice will be given.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming in, Alderwoman. Okay, now, is anyone present? It's actually going to be our first matter of the day, but I want to get some things sorted ahead of hearing it. So 353-21-Z and 354-21-Z. So Greg Mills, if you're on, please let us know.
Yes, I'm on, Chairman.
Okay, great. Okay, Greg, so for this matter, and let me see the address real quick, it's 2215 South Christiana Avenue. We don't think we can hear it today. I know we've requested, not only is it pretty clear in our findings at that, but we've done some telephone follow-up with you to get an economic analysis. You know, we just want to, we just want to make that clear ahead and hear from you if there was any reason why you haven't provided it with our rules and with the follow-up.
I thought we had provided the financials. Are you saying you guys don't have that?
So, okay, so in the application, there's a type of financials, but I know you appear in front of the board, not infrequently. And we've like stressed, almost to me sounding like a broken record, the requirement that everyone uses our economic analysis form, super simple form, shows with variation, without variation, and the numbers we need to review this. I can't, I can't expect the board to review and, and translate true financials.
And, okay.
So I just want to, I want to say this for everyone, we're, we're going to be really requiring this going forward because I hate hearing my voice saying the same things. So on this one, it's 353-21-Z and 354-21-Z. We're going to continue and hear it in November so long as you provide what we're asking for.
Okay, understood.
Okay, great. So on those numbers, no further notice will be given and we'll see you on November 19th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you. Okay, and before we get started, because then we can dive in, I just want to stress that sentiment to all attorneys, all pro se applicants on the call who frequently appear. You know, we're trying to streamline and in that, I feel like the process is actually made simpler and a little bit easier. So just, you know, when we ask for something, whether it's economic analysis, whether it's more photos of the block, whether it's a true affidavit where things are written out in affidavit style, provide them or else we're just going to continue. So let's get started with everybody on that note. First up today is 355-21-S. And this is at 8204 South Cottage Grove Avenue. So Rashida, I'm a newbie. Let me know if you are on. I see Rashida, I just need to be promoted. Hey Rashida, I believe you're on. Is, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. So before we get started, I'm going to quick read the Department of Planning and Development's recommendation. So this is for calendar number 355-21-S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of the public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. The department also finds that the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Yes, do you have to me a question right now?
Yeah, one, one second, Rashida. Give us a second. Okay, everyone bear with me. Nancy Radzovic from the Department of Planning and Development is on. And we are going to be having the department read these recommendations when they're pro se because they are testifying. So I apologize, everyone, but Nancy, can you go ahead and read that as well?
Absolutely. So the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. The department finds that this proposal complies with all the applicable standards of the zoning ordinance, is in the interest of public convenience and will not have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood. Excuse me. The department also finds the hair salon will be compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of building scale and design and operating characteristics. Lastly, the proposed hair salon is designed to promote pedestrian safety and comfort.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Okay, so Rashida, will you please state your name and address?
My name is Rashida Ononobi. My address is 8204 South Cottage Grove Avenue, Chicago Illinois 60619.
Thank you very much. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings? Okay, great. Can you just say yes for the translator?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Okay, great. Perfect. And Rashida, what brings you here today?
Yeah, I'm here today to seek an approver, zoning approver to get a license for my salon at 8204 South Cottage Grove.
Perfect. So we're going to run through the board. Can always feel free to chime in. We're going to run through just some questions to make sure that we get everything out there. Do, do you currently operate any type of salon or have experience in this type of salon?
I would say yes because I've been in school. I've been in the setting. I have my talents. So yes.
Okay.
I've been to have the knowledge of how it should be.
Great. So you, you, you've been in school and is this the first time that you're opening a salon?
This is my first time of opening this salon.
Okay, great. Can you tell us a little bit about how it will operate? Will you have employees? Will you be taking only reservations or will you allow walk-ins?
Can you say the question again, please?
Yeah, so can you tell me a little bit about how the salon will operate?
The salon is going to operate like, like if I have a client, it's going to be, I'm going to schedule my clients for timing.
Okay, great. So it'll be done by reservations?
Yes, by reservations. Walk-ins are welcome, that is by reservation because I take my clients on, on, on call to book them whenever the time they want to come in.
Okay. And do you intend to have any employees or will it be just you?
It's just me for now. So in the future, I, I will, I may have employees. But for now, that's, that is my, is by myself.
Thank you. And you, when you have employees down the line, we just like to confirm that you'll make sure they're educated as you are in, in the, the style of hair. And they have any types of certificates that would be required?
Yes.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board on operations or anything else?
Hi, this is Jolene Saul. I don't think we covered this. What days and hours are you open?
I can't hear that. He's breaking.
Sure. What days and hours?
Okay, the hours of my, of my, of my shop is going to be, I open at nine o'clock and close at six o'clock.
Every day?
Every day.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Rashida, we will take this under consideration. So thank you very much for, for your time today and good luck with everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, we're going to go right to calendar numbers 356-21-Z and 357-21-Z at 2319 West Column Street. So let's get Cecilia Siciliano promoted and we'll get started. Cecilia, are you on?
I am on. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can. Okay, can you please state your name and address?
Sure. Cecilia Siciliano and my address is 2319 West Column Avenue, Chicago, Illinois 60618.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. I understand that you are representing yourself.
That's right.
That we have Leanne Houston's and then Nick Siciliano on. Can you just let us know who they, who they are and what capacity?
Sure. So Nick Siciliano is my husband and co-owner of the home and Leanne is our architect.
So if we can have you give an overview of, of what the project is or what the variation is you're looking for. And then we can also get your architect on in case the board has any questions.
Sure. So due to COVID and the need to, you know, kind of spend a bit more time at, at home, we were seeking to have some shaded area in our home. What you're seeing on the screen right now is our only really usable outdoor space, which is the deck on top of our garage and it currently does not have any sort of shading. So we underwent a process to add a pergola to it, which is where we hired Leanne. And in that process of seeking a permit for that pergola, we learned of two variances with regards to the deck that is in the condition that would, in the same condition that it was built back in 2003 and we purchased the home in 2015. So the two variances is, and I got a look at my notes for this one, but it's to reduce the minimum rear setback and then relocate the required rear yard space to the garage deck.
Okay. And, and will the pergola, the pergola will go on top of the rooftop?
That's right.
Got it. Okay. And just for a little bit of context, so I know this was built in 2003. You purchased the property in 2015. Just for context for everyone on the call, which might be a little bit repetitive, we just see a lot of these connectors. This connector in two, in 2003, there was a gap where connectors were allowed. I think I'll yell that for simplifying in that way. But my understanding, and we'll probably hear from your architect on it, is that all the correct permits were received for it. And then, then the code changed afterwards. And yeah, the reason that you're here in front of us today is really to modify it in any way via the pergola.
That's right. Yeah, the, really, we're looking to legalize the current structure.
Yep.
That's the, that's the request.
And you're not changing the stairs in any way? Okay.
No, there's really no space to change the stairs in any way.
Okay, good. Great. Any questions from the board before we maybe hear from the architect? Okay, let's talk to Leanne Houston's. Are you on?
I am.
Hi, Leanne. Can you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Leanne Houston's, 949 North Walcott, Chicago 6062, 622, with my company's name is 949 Design.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do, thank you.
Okay. So can you give us a little bit of your architectural perspective on this project?
Uh, yeah, so basically I just went out there, I measured what was there and, you know, I could see no problem putting on a pergola because of, I was told that this was built back in 2003. And we actually tried to search for previous records and we could not find any drawings from the city. We did our due diligence. And so then when we submitted for permit with what we had, zoning came back and said, the pergola is fine, but we don't have a record of the bridge being in this configuration. And you don't have enough rear yard. And so then they told us that we needed to get a variance for those two items. But there was nothing, no issues with the pergola. So of, of course, that was a huge surprise to all of us. And so we did what we had to do and have submitted everything accordingly. And Cecilia's done a great job.
Great, yep. Yeah, so it's, it's really to fix an existing non-conformity. The variation puts the bridge in a way into, you know, conformity through a variation. And it's because of this weird gap when the code was different. Are there any questions from the board on this? Okay, we'll take this under consideration and thank you, thank you both for coming in today and for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going into a string of matters, which I'll confirm with counsel that we can take all at once. But it starts with 358-21-S. It goes to 359-21-Z, 360-21-S to 361-21-Z. Heman, are you on for this one?
Rolando Acosta is here, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Rolando. So can I confirm with you that you're okay taking this all at once?
Yes, I can take all four matters at once. They're twin buildings adjacent to one another. So the testimony is essentially the same other than there's two different addresses.
Okay, great. So I'm going to go ahead and read the two special use recommendations since you're, you're counsel. Okay, so for calendar number 358-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor of a proposed four-story, three-dwelling unit with detached three-car garage, provided that development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September 10th, 2021, prepared by Hannah Architects. Okay, and so for the next one, calendar number 360-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor for a proposed four-story, three-dwelling unit with detached three-car garage, provided that development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September 10th, 2021, prepared by Hannah Architects. Okay, Counselor, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, good morning. My name is Rolando Acosta. I am the attorney for the applicant. With me here today is Igor Mission, who's a representative of the applicant, and John Hannah, who is the architect for this project. These matters, as I said previously, are twin buildings located on individual lots. They're each three-unit buildings, four-story buildings with three units, including ground floor residential. The summary here is this particular block of Ashland doesn't really have a lot of active retail. It has quite a few residential uses on the ground floor. And what retails there, as you can see, this building's been vacant for a couple of years, attempting to lease a retail space. Proposes to demolish the building you see and construct two, three-unit buildings next to each other. The buildings require a variation as well as the special use. The variation is for minimum lot area. They're 125 feet short of what would be needed to have three units. The, that results from the fact that the, the lots themselves The that results from the fact that the the lots themselves are short by ten feet. So we have two hundred and fifty square feet of lot area missing per lot. Then if we had that uh regular size, would have accommodated the proposed three units. It's consistent in terms of height and uh appearance and unit count with others on the block. There's residential buildings newly constructed nearby. By the way, I should note that Mr. Pulos, our appraiser, is also on the call. Uh, and I think lastly, for the board's information, we have met with the Lakeview Rosco Chamber of Commerce, uh, which is the community group for this area. They have issued a letter of support, and particularly in the letter noted that for this block of Ashland, residential is a better use than establishing more retail, which probably will suffer from vacancy. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to swear in my witnesses and have them validate their affidavits.
Great. Go right ahead.
Uh, Igor, are you on?
I am. Hello, everyone.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Igor Mission, thirty-nine twenty-eight North Ashland Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one three.
And you please. And really, really quick, I'll swear them in. Rolando, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Igor, you previously submitted an affidavit for each one of these addresses, uh, summarizing the testimony you would give for this to this board if you were to testify today. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those affidavits?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Uh, John, are you on? He was having troubles. He was some for some reason getting knocked out every time he signed.
He's on the phone. Uh, John Hannah, please press star six on your phone to unmute.
Okay, I'm here.
John, please state your name and address for the record.
Uh, John Hannah, President of Hannah Architects, Inc., one eighty West Washington, Chicago, Illinois.
The chairman's where you in?
And and John, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And John, you are the architect for this project, and you previously submitted an affidavit summarizing your testimony. Uh, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those affidavits?
Uh, it would.
Thank you. Uh, and the last witness we have is Mr. Peter Pulos, our MAI appraiser. I believe he is on.
Good morning. I'm on.
Good morning, Peter. Uh, will you state your name and address for the record, please?
Peter Pulos, Office of the Fifty-five Hundred Pearl Street, Rosemont, Illinois.
And you submitted a report with for each one of these matters, summarizing your review of the cases and your findings. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those reports?
Yes, it would.
Yep. And Peter, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Great. And we acknowledge uh your your expertise based off of many past appearances with different backgrounds that I appreciate.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and apologies for preempting your swearing them in again.
No worries.
Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, I think it's fairly straightforward matter. Uh, we'd like to turn to questions for the board just for matter for time expediency. I don't know if you have any questions or do not.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think I think we'd like to hear, especially whenever we um get the special use for residential below the second floor. I think if Peter could give us more of a layout of what's nearby in the neighborhood, because from the photos, it looks like the adjacent properties do have commercial on the first floor.
Yeah, so that that particular um block of um of Ashland, it actually in in my report, there is an aerial view, and I note um all the properties on that specific block um that do have uh residential on the ground floor. Uh, it may be as many as eight or ten. Um, I, I, sorry, I don't have access to the report just because the Zoom uh meeting is full screen. Um, however, there there are, there is plenty. Um, and then once you get further um north on Ashland uh after Irving Park, it is also um mostly residential on the ground floor. Um, so the character of the neighborhood is 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 very residential and ground floor in nature.
Okay, um. Okay, great. Sorry, just looking into something. And did you? I know you you spoke to the neighborhood groups. Were there conversations with the aldermen as well?
There were. We actually initiated our conversations with the uh neighborhood group by first contact in the alderman's office, who directed us to work with the Lakeview Rosco Chamber. So we did that. They issued, actually, they issued their uh letter of support to the alderman's office. I don't believe he has chimed in, but he is very aware of this, and we followed his procedure.
Okay.
This is, sorry to interrupt. This is Jolene Salt.
Oh, Jolene, you want to mute really?
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah. Was that letter included in the application? I don't, I was looking for it. I don't see it.
I believe it's been submitted to the board. It wasn't with our application because it came subsequent to our application.
Okay, if, I don't know, someone, I guess for staff, if we have that letter, someone can point me to it or share it. That'd be great.
And Mr. Chair, just to follow up, that's on page four of my report where it illustrates the uh surrounding properties that have ground-floor residential.
Okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, and and goes without saying, but board members always free to chime in. It's never an interruption. Um, so with that, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, this is Hema Castro. I'm one of the attorneys also on the case um who also helped put the case together. We did submit the letter of support from the Lakeview Rosco Chamber of Commerce, and uh that was submitted to Victor, and the alderman's office is also supportive. They were unable to just procedurally to write a letter of support, but they are supportive. Um, but yeah, they they defer to the community for the support.
Okay. Um, another question that comes to mind, and whoever's best to answer this, um, go right ahead. But as related to the variances, um, can you describe what you can and cannot do to the building if you don't get the variations? Is it that it's no matter what, less units, or are you able to make certain units smaller?
No, it's actually, Mr. Chairman, I think I can uh respond to that. It actually would be less units. So absent the variation, you would only be able to build two units on this site because you'd be short in MLA by a hundred and twenty-five square feet. Uh, there is a pro forma that was submitted on the board's form that shows if the applicant were to go to that model, he would have a two percent return versus the three-unit model generating a nine percent return. So it's not an issue of making the unit smaller. It's actually an issue of the actual quantity of units.
About your questions from the board?
Yeah, this is Anne McDonald. I just want to make sure that I understood that last point. So the difference in the anticipated sales price is a result of the fact that you'd you'd have one less unit. Is that right?
That's correct. We have two versus three. Yes.
And then just really quickly, this is Hema Castro again. Um, I just looked at my email. We did submit the letter of support to uh Nancy, to Victor and Jeanette um and Janine on the ninth, which is uh the day before all everything is due.
Yeah, and and Hemen, I think we've got that chamber letter support. I think I think the one that we were interested in was there's no aldermanic, and and you said um you've got their support, but no letters. So like, to be fair, we can't really consider that, but like, we'll consider the the chambers.
That's correct. The alderman opted, the alderman opted not to.
Yep.
State its opinion.
And did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. And and other questions from the board? Okay, doesn't sound like any, so we will take these under consideration. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up, moving to calendar number three sixty-two dash twenty-one dash Z at twenty-two oh seven West Eighth. And I believe this is uh either Rolando and or Hemenah again, and that we should have phone from Alderman Sichu Lopez's office on. Uh, Nancy, I see you're raising your hand, so go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick note, and I apologize for the late notice, but before you read the recommendation, I was reviewing it, and I noticed that there's a an additional condition on there, a third condition that's no longer applicable. It was related to the fence, and all of that was resolved, so.
This was for the last string of?
No, for your, for this one coming up right now.
Uh, I think you're the next. That's the next one.
Yeah.
That's gotta be the next one, because this is.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Okay.
No worries. Well, um, good. I'll I'll circle back.
Okay. Thank you.
About that when it comes up. Um. Okay, good. So do we have Alderman Sichu Lopez or a um representative on? Like to see if we have them before we get started. Maybe we won't. Um.
Chairman, um, I I would just like to, before Rolando takes this case, uh presents this case, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to um the Alderman's Office and the community movement and just involvement that was um that happened for this case. We met with the Boys and Girls Club, uh, the local uh parents um of the school, the local school. And um we flyer'd uh along with the Alderman's Office, so um we're very real proud of this project. And I know that the Alderman uh, Alderman Chief of Staff Javier wanted to come on to uh state his support. Um, even if he doesn't make it on, I just wanted to say a thank you, just put it on record um for helping us get this project off the ground.
Yeah, thank you for that, Hemen. And I don't see, I do not see Javier on, although they did um let us know that they would be appearing. I think that um there's enough in the application to confirm their support, but I'll let you um explain that. So I think we can just get started on it.
Again, Rolando Acosta and Hemen Castro, both from Acosta Esger, here on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we have with us Tio Scordi, who is a representative of the applicant, as well as Kaya and Himal, who are architects on this project. Um, here available to testify. This is an existing building. You can see on the screen right now that was L-shaped originally. It was a transitional residence for many years. It's been vacant for a good many years. Also, the proposal is to build additions to this particular building, essentially creating what would be a like a like an O shape, filling in what's missing of the two legs, and generate twenty-two units in the building with eleven parking spaces. Six of the units would be affordable, including two of the units being at grade ADA affordable units, which are highly needed in this community. Uh, the pri- property was the subject of a rezoning through the alderman's office. As Hemenah mentioned, we had about a two-year process of community outreach with community meetings and the block being flyer'd, uh, visiting with the zoning advisory board of the alderman's office. That led to the rezoning of the property and the alderman's support for that rezoning. The variations that are requested are two. They're both setback variations. There's a setback variation on the west and a setback variation on the rear, which would be the south of the property. They're both necessitated by the fact that the additions would sit on top of the existing buildings and hence would follow the walls of the the existing building, and the existing walls both encroach on the setbacks of both side setback to the west and we are setback to the south. Um, so it's the existing building that's causing the hardship and the reasons why we need uh these variations that have been requested. There's other buildings, as you can see from uh this exhibit in the community, that have similar kind of at-the-property-line um setbacks, and obviously, the encroachment of the existing building has long existed on the site. Uh, we did present um a pro forma showing the impact on the rate of return, because without these variations, we would have to lose units and have to reconfigure this project. And obviously, the loss of units would also result in a relative proportional loss in affordable units. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to swear in my witnesses, have them affirm uh their affidavits, and then turn to any questions the board would have. Uh, Tio, are you?
Yes, I am.
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Tio Scordi, fifty-nine oh one North Cicero, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six four six.
And you're the.
And Mr. Scordi, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
You're a principal, Tio, with the applicant?
Yes.
And you previously submitted an affidavit with respect to this matter, as well as prepared the pro forma that I previously referred to. And if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with those affidavits and with respect to the pro forma, the pro forma being accurate?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, is Kaya on?
Uh, actually, I'm here. Architect Hamel Prohit from IR Design.
Okay, Hamel, but I need Kaya.
Uh, let me just hold on a second.
Rolando is Kaya Katmerka Ramech.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
I'm sorry. I'm trying. I use her nickname only because if I were to try to remember how to pronounce her name, I'd probably butcher it. But uh, yes, she she is the architect for the project, along with Hamel, who's been working on it. Hamel has more detail, so he's on in case the board has questions, but I know that I need Kaya to validate her affidavit.
Been promoted. Yep.
I am on now.
Hi, good morning, Kaya.
Good morning.
Uh, you're the architect for the project?
Yes, Hamel and I are.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Katmerka Ramech, four-four-six-eight North Elston Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three oh.
Well, if the chairman's where you in?
Yep. And Miss Ramech, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And Kaya, you previously submitted an affidavit with respect to this matter, and if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with that affidavit?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, uh, happy to answer questions the board may have.
Okay, great. I can um, I'll get us started. I'm I'm, so will you remind me, Rolando, how many units will be in this altogether?
There's twenty-eight units in this altogether.
Okay, and um how many how many parking spots?
Eleven parking spaces. There are three in a garage that faces Levitt, and then the balance are in the courtyard, kind of in the center of the building.
Great. And and I know there's there's a big bike stall area. Um, do you foresee any issues around parking?
Uh, we do not. Uh, this is transit-oriented. It's within the requisite distances to the train stations. Uh, and clearly, the size of the units and the marketing will be directed to people that do not own vehicles. Uh, that was the subject of the rezoning. That's one of the reasons for that rezoning was to establish the transit served location nature of this property.
Okay, yeah. For people who um can't get a spot, is there street parking in the area?
There is. There's street parking on Levitt. Actually, Levitt's rather wide. The side rock's rather wide. Uh, so there's parking there. There's parking on Eighteenth Street. Across the street from this to the north is an industrial area, so that that frontage is really not parked regularly. It's somewhat underutilized industrial area, so there is that frontage on Eighteenth Street immediately west of this property.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Okay, I think we've heard, we've heard a bit about the community outreach as well, so I'm going to skip that line of questioning. Um, and I think we'll take this under consideration. I think we've got every, all the information we need to consider.
Thank you very much and have a great day.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Bye. Thank you.
Now we go to calendar number three sixty-three dash twenty-one dash S. Let me look. So I see, um, Nancy, if you're still on, so it's number three in the recommendation that's being struck?
Yes, it's no longer applicable. Thanks.
Perfect. So I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendations since there's counsel. Um, and then we can get going. So for calendar number three sixty-three dash twenty-one dash S, Codere Learning Center, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a community center in an existing two-story building with a one-story addition, provided that number one, the special use is issued solely to the applicant, Codere Learning Center. Number two, the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty, with site slash landscape plan and details dated September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, landscape tree index dated May seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and landscape roof plan dated April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, all prepared by FGP Atelier LLC and Scala Plus LLC. So Rolando, with that, go right ahead.
Actually, I think Jimena was presenting this.
Yes.
Always a team operation, so I-
It is I. Hello. Good morning. My name is Jimena Castro. I'm a zoning attorney at Acosta Esger. I'm Rolando's tag team partner, but I will be taking over this case. So this case is located at 3357 West 55th Street. And with me today, I have Daniel Loftus, who is the CEO of the applicant, and the architect for the project, John Manavis. And before we begin, I just want to say thank you to Alderman Burke's Office for working for, with this project to, to make this project a reality. And I also wanted to say thank you to Nancy and Ron, who worked tirelessly to get this project off the ground and into your hands. I really appreciate all their input and all their hard work. It was truly a team effort, so thank you for that. And so let me know, Chairman, what you would, how you would like me to begin. Do you want me to swear in the witnesses or talk about the case?
Yeah, you know, we can, we can go ahead and swear in, why not? And then you can get started. So it's okay with you, Jimena, I'll just run down the list.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, so first up is Daniel Loftus. Are you on?
I am.
Great. And Daniel, can you state your name and address? Tell us which role you are here.
Sure. Daniel Loftus, 25 East Sarah Street, Hinsdale, Illinois 60521. And I am the founder and CEO of Poder, the applicant.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. How about John Manavis?
Yes, present.
Great. John, can you state your name and address and let us know your role?
Yes, John Manavis. I'm president of Scala Plus, architect, 421 West Melrose Street, Chicago, Illinois 60657.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Lastly, we've got Patrick Brown. Are you on?
Yes, I'm here.
Great. Patrick, will you state your name and address as well as your role on the project?
Yes, I'm an architect. My name is Patrick Brown. Address is 2527 West Shakespeare, Chicago, Illinois 60647.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Jimena, you can go right ahead.
And then also just noting that Peter, Peter Pulis is also present. He was the appraiser on the case.
And thank you. And I apologize, my video is off. I keep getting kicked out, so I'm trying to save some bandwidth.
I mean, you're in the Oval Office. They don't want you near it.
The internet over here, the internet at the White House, not so good.
And great, we acknowledge Peter's been sworn in. We acknowledge his expertise. Never mean to skip him over. He just wasn't on my list.
Great. Okay, so this, this case, again, looking at 3357 West 55th Street. It is Zoned RS3, which necessitates us to file a special use to ask for community center use at this site. I'd like to note for the record that Poder is a, it's a corporate, it's a corporation, it's a, it's a beautiful company that allows for new immigrants, new Latino immigrants, the Chicagoland area, to be trained with skills, the skills they need to emerge into the workforce. So they do hands-on training to all the Latino immigrants that go through their doors. They have a high success rate, so we were very happy to team up with them. And they are moving their headquarters to this location, and they will have a community center use where they will be training and teaching all of their students. And, you know, me being Hispanic, this is very close and dear to my heart. And again, we, it was a team effort with Nancy and Ron and the architects on this case to get started. But yeah, it's very simple. It's just a community center use at this site. So I'll open that up for questions.
Yeah, that's great, Jimena. Thanks very much. You know, it'd be awesome just to hear from, from the applicant a little bit about operations and even just how this site impacts the organization.
Sure, thank you, Chairman. Appreciate the opportunity. Again, Daniel Loftus, CEO of Poder. So we are a 25-year-old immigrant integration center. When we talk about immigrant integration, it's first and foremost about societal integration. So we spend a significant amount of time with our participants on English, but also job skills, life skills. We also get into to culture, race, history. And then part B, as, as Jimena mentioned, is the workforce piece of, of getting individuals into industry-specific job training and ultimately into careers more than jobs. And back to the building, we spent our first 18 years on 18th Street in Pilsen. That neighborhood obviously has changed significantly due to gentrification. We moved into the Midway Airport area, but we're intentional over the last five or six years about establishing satellite sites because of the dispersment of the Latino population, first and second generation immigrants, ultimately understanding that we had to have a central location. We had to have a physical brick and mortar site to build trust and beyond Poder programs to make certain that we're opening up additional services, understanding that while a job is, is a critical piece, it's not the answer in and of itself. So we look forward to partnering with local organizations with whom we've been working on the southwest side for five or six years to offer immigrant, you know, legal services, mental health services, a series of other resources to make certain that immigrants have all they need to fully and successfully integrate into society.
It's, yeah, that's great. And even, you know, thinking about just day-to-day operations, is it kind of a walk-in, walk-out type of place? What are the hours? Things like that?
Yeah, I mean, for the majority of our participants, the trainees, they are on set schedules. First class will start as early as 8:15 in the morning. The last class will end at 8:30 at night. The idea is to run different shifts. This is obviously for in-person. We've seen significant enrollment of our remote students, obviously enrolling over the last year and a half. But I think as importantly to your question, we want to make certain that this is the welcoming center, that the city really has a whole whack and people feel like they can walk in and access a whole slew of resources rather than simply our English classes or job training.
Thank you for that. Any other questions from the board, not only for Mr. Loftus, but for any of the other experts?
Yeah, I had a brief question, and I welcome anyone to address it. I just wanted to take it one step further on what Mr. Loftus was addressing. And if you could talk a little bit more about why you picked this location and why you think that this is a positive addition to this particular neighborhood and community and how that interaction is important to you?
I appreciate the question. Driven by this building for five or six years, our first partner in the community after we left Pilsen was St. Gall Church and Catholic Charities at 55th and Kedzie, essentially the epicenter of least Catholic Latino neighborhoods to Chicago at this point. So I know the neighborhood really well. I know the need in the neighborhood. And now, as we've branched out, you know, essentially our satellite sites pre-pandemic ran from Brighton Park on the north side, all the way down to Ashburn. So the central location of this, allowing us to get access to, to, to the need in a lot of different parts of the city, obviously makes it attractive. And the last piece is, as we all know, the southwest side has been incredibly disinvested over the years. There's an intentionality now, especially from the mayor's office, to invest in south and west. We've got corridors, investment corridors, running a couple blocks east, as well as just a few blocks west. We feel like this development provides that connective tissue along 55th Street that's obviously going to benefit our services, benefit the community, but also those local businesses.
Thank you so much. That's very helpful.
Other questions from the board? I hear none. So we've got what we need. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. We'll take this under consideration. And as I know, a lot of clients of Poder are of Mexican descent, I have to say happy, happy Independence Day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Great. Okay, so next up, we are going to calendar number 364-21-S. This will be- Yep, okay, good.
All right. So again, for the record, my name is Jimena Castro. I'm a zoning attorney at Acosta Esger. I am the zoning attorney for this case. This case is located at 5525 North Milwaukee Avenue. We are here before you today to ask for special use to allow a beauty salon used at this location. Again, thank you to Nancy for working with us on this case. And to the rest of the ZBA administrative team, thank you for your help. I'm with me-
Jimena, sorry to interrupt. A few things before, before we get started. A, I want to quick get Peter's. He wasn't on my list, and I apologize because it's a misstep. I want to get Peter's quick, like, testimony and approval on the last matter. That's my mistake. And then I'll read for this one, the department's recommendation, before we get going. So Peter, are you still on?
Yes, I am. I actually got dropped while I was dropped, so, and thanks for coming back.
No, no worries. We're all, you know, Zoom landscape. So, Jimena, I'll let you, I'll let you do that. Let's just get Peter on the record.
Okay. Okay, Peter, going back to, so we're talking about this case before, right?
This is, this is 363-21-S. Apologies, everyone, the one we just closed out. We've just got to hear that Peter confirms everything.
Okay, so Peter, going back to the, the community center at Poder on 55th Street, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent to the report that you provided to the board?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Thank you.
That does, that does the trick. Thanks, everyone. Now we will fully take 363-21-S under consideration. Again, sorry about that. So moving on to 364-21-S, Jimena will be presenting. I want to quick read the department's recommendation prior to her doing so. So 364-21-S, Cozio Solutions LLC, doing business as HG Parlor. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon. Right ahead, counselor.
Great. So again, my name is Jimena Castro. For the record, attorney at Acosta Esger, attorney for the matter before you today at 5525 North Milwaukee Avenue. We're seeking a special use to allow a beauty salon at this location. And with me today is Dorota Bartosziak, who is the manager of the applicant and will be managing the business operations of the salon. With me as well is also Adriana Paborca, who is Dorota's daughter, and she will be the main honcho on site, the main hairstylist that will be taking over, sprinkling her hairstylist magic onto this location. And lastly with us is also Peter Pulis, who is the appraiser for this case. So Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, I could swear them in and ask them to verify their affidavit?
Perfect. Yep, you can read this one. Thanks, Jimena.
Great. Dorota, if you were to testify today, would your testimony be consistent with the affidavit that was provided to the zoning board of appeals?
Yes.
Wonderful.
And let's just get her sworn in. So, okay, sorry. So Ms. Bartosziak, will you please state your name and address for the record?
Dorota Bartosziak, AD122 West Winamec Avenue, Norwich, Illinois 60706.
Thank you very much. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. I'll, Jimena, I'll, I'll, I'll do Adriana as well. So Ms. Paborca, will you please state your name and address?
Yes, Adriana Paborca, 8122 North Winamec Avenue, Norwich, Illinois 60706.
Thank you very much. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
Yes, I do.
And Peter Pulis is also on. We have sworn him in, and we have already acknowledged his expertise.
Great.
Thank you, Ms.
Okay, so I guess there's not that much really to be said, except that it's a special use at this location. Both of the ladies that were sworn in, Dorota will be managing the business operations of the salon. And her daughter Adriana will be the main hairstylist at this location. She has over 11-plus years of experience. She will be bringing all of her loyal clientele to this location. And we will open up the floor for questions if there are any.
Yeah, I have a question. So I noticed on your last few cases, you kind of went deep into the neighborhood and met with the Alderman. You brought him up. You brought up, you know, some of the neighborhood people, but I haven't heard anything on this one. So did you do any neighborhood outreach on this one in the 45th board like you did in 25 and 14?
Yes, sir. We, we reached out to the Alderman's Office. We've been working with the Alderman's Office with Mary from the Alderman, Mary Joyce from the Alderman's Office. Dorota and I have both been working with her, and they love the project right away. The landlord here, who owns the two adjacent, I believe Dorota, he owns two more built shops and this strip mall. He is also very supportive as well. And we did receive a phone call from a community member who was happy. She's happy that we're opening the salon here. She was just a little bit concerned about the parking situation, and we resolved that as well. And besides that, you know.
Did you reach out to the Business Association there in Jefferson Park?
We did not. We defer-
I know they have a pretty active business association, so. I mean, it seemed like, I just seemed like you always went deep into the neighborhood. I just was wondering why we didn't go as deep in Jefferson Park as we did in Pilsen.
Yeah, no, we deferred to the Alderman's Office on this one, but I will duly-
Yeah, I always like to hear from the Alderman's Office, but I like to hear from the community groups too, meaning the business associations or the neighborhood groups. And I know this is a very active business group in Jefferson Park, so that's why I'm a little perplexed, why you didn't go deep with them.
Yeah, no, duly noted. And from now on, I will 100% do that.
Thank you.
And on Sam's note, can you, can you talk a little bit about the parking issue? Because there, I see a good amount of stations, so I'm just trying to get a view of operations and where people will park if there's essentially eight stations.
Yeah, so there will be all the appointment, it will be appointment-based, especially during COVID. You know, everything will be, you know, only appointment-based. And there is free parking in the front as well. So clients will be parking on Milwaukee. The, the person that did call, the neighbor that did call, she was, she lives one street over, so she was complaining about a restaurant that is right by her that keeps parking. The people keep parking right by her house. So she was just concerned. But once she heard that this was appointment-based only, and we talked it out, she has no other issues.
Okay, okay, and maybe, maybe if we could hear a little bit from, I think maybe Peter could answer some of the, like, parking questions of this neighborhood as well.
I'm sorry, specifically with the question just regarding how the, where the, where the ability to park, the availability to park?
Even, even, right, just is there availability? Because we know that when there was community outreach, there were some questions asked of parking. And there's a good amount of stations potentially to be in use in this salon. So just trying to make sure that on this part of Milwaukee, there's potential to, you know, for people to find spots and not for this to be eight extra cars in a small strip.
Yeah, actually, on this stretch of Milwaukee, you know, it is free parking and there is, there, it's, it's rarely, you know, packed with parking. There's always, there's usually pretty much availability parking spaces throughout the day, even if you're going to, you know, if you're looking at aerials or looking at Google Street Views, I mean, you could see several open, open spaces. So it seemed, it appeared as though that the parking wouldn't be an issue, and especially because it's appointment-based. You know, we didn't see any, any issues with lots of cars coming in and out.
Okay, great. Other questions from the board? Thank you, everyone, for coming in today. We'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's, let's do one more, and then let's take a quick, a quick break. So that will bring us to calendar number three- So that will bring us to calendar number three sixty-five dash twenty-one dash Z at sixty-seven forty-two Byron Street. So Fred Augustine, let us know when you're present. Do we have Fred Augustine on?
Yes, Mr. Augustine, just unmute. Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Hi, Mr. Chairman.
No, no worries. Okay, let's get started. This is calendar number three sixty-five dash twenty-one dash Z. Variation, counselor, I'll let you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, again, for the record, my name is Fred Augustine. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Tomas Tomaszewski, applicant is the contract purchaser of the property at sixty-seven forty-two West Byron. Property measures forty-nine feet wide and a hundred eighty-seven feet deep. Currently approved with a single-family residence that's around ninety-five years old. The applicant plans to keep the existing home and rehab it. The applicant and his family will reside in the home. Originally, the applicant's plan was to renovate the interior of the home as well as construct a second-floor addition towards the rear of the home. A building permit was obtained for that addition. The applicant, however, realized he needed additional bedrooms for his family. So as a result, he wanted to tell us to build a second-floor addition towards the front of the home, so that you have a full second floor on the existing home. In order to build that second-floor addition towards the front of the home, the applicant is seeking a variation to reduce the front setback from the required forty feet to twenty point four-two feet. And Mr. Chairman, just talk about the hardship here. Hardship here is the existing home that is around ninety-five years old. The existing home currently does not provide the required front setback of forty feet. It does, however, provide a front setback of twenty point four-two feet, which is the relief we're seeking. As well as, you know, the second-floor addition will be aligned with the existing walls of the home. Thus providing also a front setback of twenty point four-two feet. Here with me this morning is the applicant Tomas Tomaszewski and our project architect, Beata Clark. Mr. Tomaszewski, are you on?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Tomaszewski, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Tomas Tomaszewski. My address is sixty-seven twenty-two West Byron. Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three four.
And you are the contract purchaser of the property at Byron, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Tomaszewski, before counselor keeps going, can you, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. And your plan is to renovate and build a second-floor addition towards the front of the home, is that correct?
Yes.
And the second-floor addition, in order to do the second-floor addition, you are seeking a variation to reduce the front setback, is that right?
Yeah.
And as I stated before, the existing home already has a front setback of twenty point four-two feet, correct?
Yes.
And the second-floor addition will be aligned with the existing walls of the home, is that correct? Which is necessitating the relief we are seeking, is that right?
Yes.
And for the record, you did speak to your neighbor at sixty-seven thirty-six West Byron about the addition as well as the variation we are seeking, is that right?
Yes.
And he has no problem with our project as well as the variation you applied for today, is that correct?
Yes.
On your behalf, my office did submit an affidavit that you executed, is that right?
Yes.
And if we continued your testimony here today would be consistent with the facts presented in your affidavit, is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, if I could go to the architect, Beata Clark, Ms. Clark?
Yes, good morning.
Ms. Clark, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Beata Clark. I'm at thirty-five thirty-five North Harlem Avenue, Unit two oh five, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six three four.
And you are a licensed architect in the state of Illinois, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
And Ms. Clark, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And as I stated previously, the property is approved within an older sixty, older single-family residence, is that right?
Yes, correct.
And working with such a home is always, always poses a hardship, is that right?
Yes.
Currently, the existing home provides a twenty point four-two feet front setbacks, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And as I stated earlier, the second-floor addition will be aligned with the walls of the existing home, is that right?
Yes.
Thus providing also the same twenty point four-two front setback, is that right?
Yeah.
And just to reiterate, we are seeking variation to reduce the front setback from the forty point six-four feet requirement to twenty point four-two feet, is that right?
This is correct, yes.
On your behalf, my office did submit an affidavit that you executed?
Yes.
And if we continued your testimony here today would be consistent with the facts presented in the affidavit, is that right?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for my witnesses, and we're here to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so let's start with, this appears to have already been built. So counselor and applicant, please go into depth explaining that to us.
So let me speak for, for, before Tomas starts, you know, they started, he wanted to do the addition, the front addition. They already built the rear addition. They had a permit for that. His workers already started doing the front addition, realizing they don't have a permit for that. So we automatically stopped. We told them we had to stop doing it because they needed to seek an amended permit for it, which necessitates this variation. So it was a mistake on his part. Tomas, if, and the architect, if you'd like to speak on that further as well?
Well, yes, as Counsel mentioned, so initially we went for the permit for the second just a partial second-floor addition, leaving the front of the house as is, you know, with like typical bungalow dormer. But then my client realized he needed a bigger house to accommodate bedroom for his children. And he just didn't realize, you know, it, it, you can't just, you know, build it. Unfortunately, he realized it too kind of late after already starting, but you know, the moment he realized that, we immediately stopped and seek the, you know, the help of the zoning attorney to make, you know, the, the process right. So anyhow, right now, as mentioned, we're looking for a full second-story addition. The house is under construction, you know, per the permit that we received last October. But again, the client needs bigger house, so he's looking to have, you know, instead of two bedrooms as the previously permitted, to have four bedrooms on the second floor to accommodate all of his children. And yeah, that's basically it. So the house, the front of the house, the second story would line up with the first story instead of being set back like twenty feet.
Okay, and Ms. Clark, if you could do me a favor and just speak a little louder. Then can you explain the variation that's being asked for? Can you give the board an overview of which part of the house specifically this variation is for?
Yes, so I'm assuming everyone's looking at the drawings that we have in front of us. Okay, so again, the front of the house, the original front of the house, what you don't see here, that roof in the front, you know, that was just the first floor with the small dormer on the second floor, okay? So that roof in front that you see, that's what we proposing to raise, you know, the roof and a little bit of walls to accommodate two bedrooms, what, right in that front. So the back of the house, it has a master bedroom all the way in the back and another small bedroom and the laundry room kind of in the middle of the house. So again, what we seeking is to reduce the front bit, the front setback on the second floor from forty, you know, a little bit over forty feet to twenty, to, to have the second floor align with the first floor only in the front, okay? The back of the house, that's, that's already been permitted, that's already been under construction. So is that sufficient or, I'm sorry?
Yeah, so we're just, yeah, we're just narrowing down a bit. So so the back of the house, you did not need a variation, is what you're saying.
That's correct, yeah.
Just the front of the house, the, the first twenty feet, the front of the house, the second story, yes.
Got it. And so I, the photo that shows that there's a lot of construction that's happened, that's the back of the house. And so what you're saying is you realized mid-process, is that photo, that's the rear, yes? You realized that mid-process to do the front of the house. This variation would be needed. Did the plan change or did the plan change to affect the front of the house? Or how did you, you know, how, how'd you become aware of this midway through?
Yeah, so basically the decision was my client's, because, you know, he, he has three daughters. And none of them wanted to live in a basement, so he decided, you know, he would like to have more bedrooms. So what changed, the first floor and basement didn't really change. What changed was obviously the second floor. And just, just the front. So basically what, you know, the variance that we asking for. So that, that front of the house again would accommodate two bedrooms instead of before being, that front would be just the storage space because the height, you know, of the room there wouldn't allow to have a legal bedroom, okay? So that would be kind of like, I guess, useful space but not habitable. And, and like the middle of the house didn't really change, so we still had two bedrooms and, yeah, two bedrooms and two bathrooms. So if you look at the second floor, the front where you see two bedrooms right now, you know, side to side, what it was per permit, that was again, it was just the storage space because if we didn't raise the roof, again, there wasn't enough height to have a legal habitable space there.
Okay. And how much construction has been done to the front of the building to date?
How much construction? So the roof is raised.
Roof is raised, you know, and then the whole back is ready, right?
Yeah, so, so the back of the house, what, what was permitted, it's pretty much done. Now, I mean, outside, so.
The front of the house, though, just the front of the house.
The front of the house, the roof, the roof has been raised.
Yeah, just we waiting for front of the house, you know, because, you know.
Yeah, the roof is raised and, you know, there's some windows installed.
In the back. Where it's ready, construction, we install window, you know, we just, you know, waiting for, for front. And, and, and because we don't know what's going on, right? We like to be legal with everything and, and, you know, live with the funnily.
Yeah, okay. Got it. And, and just to, you know, just to note, I, I think the contractor and the architect should know not to do any work on, in this example, the front of the house until it's come through. Because it's illegal. So with that, other questions from the board?
Yes, hi, this is Joeyen Saul. So it sounds like your family size didn't change. So were you originally planning to have bedrooms in the basement?
Yeah, we, because, you know, it's, I planned, I, when the pandemic started, you know, we started living you know, in a, in a house, so, 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 you know, I have three daughters, so it's sometimes really hard, you know, and nobody wants to live in the basement. And that's why, you know, all this proceeds and it's, we need two more bedroom in the second floor and we, 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 we ask, you know, if it possible, so we'll be great, you know, so that's, that, that's.
So you originally were going to have the bedrooms and the additional bedroom in the basement. It's just hard for me to read the plan, so that's why I'm asking. Maybe the architect can answer as well, but.
We asked, I asked architect, I asked architect if, if, how, how, how looks, you know, when we, when we start this process? And she showed me, you know, it, it's beautiful, you know, all those home change, you know, it looks like nice, clear form. So, so, so that's why we stop everything and waiting, you know.
So I, I think also the, the case was, you know, if the project is feasible, the house wasn't in such a great shape initially. And my client thought, you know, it would cost a lot, you know, of, you know, money to, to fix it. But because he does construction himself, after doing like a feasibility study, he decided that adding two bedrooms for his daughters would be much better idea than having them living in the basement.
Okay, and so is the applicant also the contractor for this?
Yes, yes, I do construction and, and all those, most of those jobs I do myself.
Okay, so you knew you needed the permit to do the front of the house?
Please repeat?
I mean, I was just asking if, if he is a contractor, he knew that he needed a permit to do the house, even though he started, he started with that one. Okay, thanks.
Awesome. Other, other questions?
Well, I, I've got one question for the applicant. If, if you knew that you needed the permit, then why did you proceed with construction before getting it?
Because the crew started doing that in, 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 in the first of January. And the guys going so fast, you know, because we worry about weather and all those, you know, and I was thinking, you know, it's it's, you know, it's calculate cost and everything, that's why, that's why, always, because it's very hard to find good, 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 good people and, 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 and then it's, it's, it's right now is a very big problem with construction, you know, job. To find, you know, good, 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 good workers and then good, good, good people available to do something. So because, you know, they have a time, they are, that, 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 it's material, you know, going crazy, crazy high, you know, this time. And we decide to, 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 let's finish that because if we leave open, you know, that, 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 that I don't know how long it take, they take to, you know.
I'm not sure, in, in, you know, in applicant's defense, I'm not sure how aware he was, really what consequences are.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, doing something like that. But the moment, you know, I kind of made him realize, we, he stopped like right away. And he seek the attorney to, to make, you know, that case, you know, legal and correct.
And, and just to, I mean, just to point out on awareness of what needed to have been done to the applicant, you're, I know you're contracting this project, but you're a contractor, right? Like, that's your, your career. You do that on other parties or properties as well?
Yes.
Okay.
But, you know, it's like a dream house for my family, you know, we love, we, we rent the house by the side of the same block in our last few years. So, 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 you know, when, when, when we find it, you know, we're going crazy, I know, and I know consequence, but not I think it's not a big, you know, it's not, whatever, you know, it's, you know, right now, I know.
Yeah, I mean, as a contractor, we're just saying, you know, I'm no authority necessarily on this body of law, but in, in some ways, you, you broke the law. So the fact that, hopefully you're not doing this for other clients as well. I'm just going to throw that out there. And wondering on when you stopped the work on it, did you get a stop-work order?
No, 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 no for that job, no, no.
We, he didn't, yeah, he didn't stop it. We didn't get anything from the city on, on this.
Okay, so it was more so that it sounds like the architect urged, reminded to come get the correct. to come get the correct variation.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration, I think we've got the information we need, and thank you everyone for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to go fifteen minute recess. That'll bring us to eleven fifteen AM. Commissioner Toya seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Great, I vote yes, so we will see everyone back from recess at eleven fifteen AM, or sorry, eleven oh five AM, apologies. So for calendar number three sixty-six dash twenty-one dash S. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a dual lane drive-through facility to serve a one-story restaurant with an outdoor patio and thirty-five onsite parking spaces, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant Cove LP LLC. And the development is consistent with the site and layout plans dated September sixteen, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Kim Lee Horn and Associates Inc. And floor plan dated March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and elevations dated September fourteen, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Omen Ernest Martin Architects. And and that property owner provides a public use permit to continue to allow signage within the public right of way.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Counselor.
Yes.
I know we've got some opposition on this one, so I'm gonna make sure they get on and then just go through some quick instructions. So do we have Melvin Gerstein and Craig Gerstein promoted?
I don't see them here, Chairman. If I, if I can make a comment, the the individuals who are in opposition, I reached out to them and had a conversation with them, and they requested that I forward to them the site plan, the landscape plan to possibly alleviate any of the issues they may have. I did submit it to them, I know they did receive them, and I tried to have a follow-up phone call conversation with them, but I was unable to reach them, so. Maybe they're satisfied, but I'm just advising you what I what I did subsequent to them filing their opposition.
Okay, awesome, yeah, thank you, Counselor, let me just make sure that we're kind of vetting everyone on the attendees list to make sure if they are on, that they get promoted. Not wholly uncommon that people don't show, we just need to be be double sure.
I have a lot of unknown names, if if these people are here, if they can raise their hand virtually, that will help us recognize them.
Yeah, Melvin Gerstein or Craig Gerstein, if you're on. Please raise your hand and and Tom will assist in getting this figured out. Okay. Seeing nothing, so we're going to move in without, without the objector process, but we will note that people had filed to object on this, so our questions towards you will in some ways reflect that. So with that, Counselor, go, go ahead and, and get started. You can get your witnesses sorted.
And for the record, my name is Barry Ash. I'm an attorney for the applicant in this matter, which is Cove LP LLC, and the applicant is requesting to allow a two-lane drive-through accessory to a proposed one-story Culvers Restaurant, which will be measuring approximately four thousand one hundred thirty-seven square feet with outdoor patio and thirty-five onsite parking spaces. This property is located generally at the northeast corner of Peterson and Lincoln Avenue and in between Troy and Albany. This, the property that's being proposed for special use also includes other property owned by the owner of the property. I am representing the land less C and not the owner. The owner is part of the Zoom. He's, he's present, but this is, this is one zoning lot, and the Culvers Restaurant is on the, along Albany Avenue and Peterson and Lincoln. This property does have some history to it. A part of the zoning lot was zoned residential, and we did coordinate with the Alderman Deborah Silverstein's office to have public hearings with the neighborhood group. There was a mailing because we needed a type-one rezoning to rezone this portion of the property from residential to commercial. So we had extensive, as I just said, extensive conversations with the Alderman, who is in support of the drive-through, because when we did have our meetings with the Alderman for the type-one rezoning, we did set forth that we were going to have a two-lane drive-through, so that was all set forth in the public meetings. I do have two expert witnesses that I would like to have sworn in. I also have the applicant, Cove LP, the, the managing member, Kevin Weasler, is also present. So if you would like to swear in, I have Kareem Musawar, who is the land use expert, along with Joe Mayer, who is the engineer for the project.
Okay, great. So yes, if we could get Kevin Weasler on, Kevin, will you please state your name and address?
Hi, Kevin Weasler. Address, business address, do you have the business address or my home address? I'm sorry.
Either works for our purposes.
Okay, four fifty McHenry Road, Buffalo Grove, Illinois.
Great. And will you remind us what, what your role with the applicant is?
Yeah, I, I am the franchisee with, with the Culvers franchise and the managing member of the LLC that is applying.
Okay, great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Perfect. Okay, Kareem Musawar. Are you on as well?
I am.
Great. Hey, Kareem, can you please state your name and address?
Yes, Kareem Musawar. I'm at two twenty-one North Buscelle Street in Chicago.
And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and we acknowledge your expertise, many past appearances. Up next, I think we've got Joseph Mayer. If you're on, can you state your name and address?
Yes, my name's Joseph Mayer with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc. My address is one eleven West Jackson, Suite thirteen twenty, Chicago, Illinois.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
And can you, Mr. Mayor, can you please remind us actually what your role is here?
Yes, I am the civil engineer on the project.
Yep, great. Thank you. And then we've got Wendy Martin. Wendy, are you on?
She was going to testify, but she is not going to be testifying at the hearing.
What was her role?
She was the architect for the property, but I believe with the engineer and with Kareem's testimony that we can answer it, and I know that Kevin can answer a lot of the architectural questions too, because he's a number of Culvers restaurants.
Okay. Okay, great. With that, Counselor, go right ahead.
Also with Kareem, Kareem, did you prepare findings of fact for this project?
I did.
And if you were tested, if you were to testify before the zoning board of appeals, would it be consistent with the findings of fact along with the exhibits that you have attached to your findings?
Yes, sir, it would.
Okay, and Joe, you prepared an affidavit relating to this project? And it was submitted to the zoning board of appeals?
I did.
And if you were to testify at this hearing, would it be consistent with the affidavit you presented to the zoning board of appeals?
It would.
And I would also like to add that because this is a special use, we did look to Alderman Deborah Silverstein to write a letter of recommendation, which I know has been submitted to the zoning board. And we're here to answer any questions you have related to this proposal.
Okay. And, and just even before we get started, so with your findings of fact, and I, I don't know the background and process on it, I wouldn't really call it the highest quality findings of fact. It took until Kareem's report to even know what the restaurant was going in. I've said it before in the past few meetings, we need affidavits that really explain what's going on. It can't be that we're learning a lot about projects kind of when the presentation happens. So I just want to point that out. Like I said earlier, when we continued the first matter, we will be continuing matters if I don't feel that there's enough information for us to have an adequate review ahead of time.
I know I did submit the project narrative, which I thought, you know, provided what was being proposed.
Okay, so I, maybe we just have a
Okay, no, I respect what you're saying. So yes, I will.
Qualities. So I'm, I'm just saying this going forward, you're going to see us continuing, continuing more in that narrative that should be built into the findings of fact application. So with that, let's go to the substance. So first thing I think we should talk about in board time and at any time, let's talk about stacking and, and potential for traffic on the adjacent street.
All right, so either Joe or Kevin, if you would like to address that, because I know we're doing a double stacking, which would, you know, aid in preventing that no stacking would occur on Albany. So if either one of you would like to further discuss that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to start, and Kevin can fill in the gaps as he sees fit. And I don't know if the site plan can be shared on the screen to aid in our discussion. But as shown, there are going to be two order point locations. This is a measure that actually helps alleviate any concern for an extensive stack that may impact traffic on Albany. So as shown, there are six cars that are able to fit between the actual drive-through window and the menu board locations, and then an additional eight cars, or sorry, seven cars that can fit within the designated drive-through lanes, you know, from the menu board back. So this is consistent with, with Culvers standard model. Kevin, any more context that you would like to provide?
I would just say that traditionally, most Culvers up until the last year or two have been single-lane drive-throughs, including one at Six Corners in the city with a very short stack there and limited parking. In our case, with the double drive-through, we're able to take more orders at the same time, get more cars in the queue, start cooking earlier. Culvers has, I don't know the number of double drive-throughs in, in, in the system, you may, you may know, Joe, but it certainly has allowed us to move cars through quicker and alleviate any stacking concerns. That said, we've been operating off a single lane drive-through since literally nineteen eighty-four and have had success, including in the city of Chicago, with the single lane drive-through. So if anything, the double lane drive-through should even further alleviate any traffic concerns.
Is it true, Kevin, that you are going to have an individual physically taking orders as cars are being queued? They're not just going to be coming to the windows, which will expedite things quicker?
Well, we will have the two menu boards, which will be, allow, you know, two individuals inside to take orders at the same time. That, that'll be the typical scenario. However, Culvers also has iPads and, and other tools at our disposal to take even more orders and move cars along even faster, and we plan to utilize all the tools that, that business calls for at that time of the day or that time of the year, or, you know, if we're fortunate enough, most of the time. But yeah, there, there are additional tools at our disposal to, to, and it's certainly in our interest too, to serve our guests faster and, and get them in and out faster.
Yeah, the last thing that I would like to mention is that if you're not familiar with Culvers model, they do provide order waiting spaces, so for larger orders that customer can pull ahead and park so that they're not holding up the rest of the drive-through queue. Those six spaces are shown on the southern side of the building parallel to a center bypass lane. But that's typical for Culvers as well, and is effective on also alleviating any stack concerns.
So Chairman, is, is any further questions on that or concerns you may have?
Yeah, well, just question for Kevin. We, in my, in my tenure, we haven't seen too many Culvers. So I'm just wondering if you can give a little background on your experience running these, running these sites and putting these sites into place.
Sure. Thank you for that question. Yeah, I'm a franchisee. We, we purchased our first location existing in, in two thousand and three, so I've been doing it for about eighteen years. We, we own three existing locations, Buffalo Grove, Lincolnshire, and Northbrook. And it's been a great franchise. Culvers has grown over those years, and the family is still, still highly involved and, and from all my experience, always does the right thing in terms of the franchisees, the employees, the guests. So I'm, I'm excited about Culvers, but really we're excited about coming into this neighborhood and, and being part of the community. We, we look forward to hiring fifty to sixty team members from what I hope is right around the restaurant. That's our model. We love, we love hiring local employees, but also getting involved in the community in any way possible, whether it's fundraisers or schools, religious organizations, community efforts. So that's, we're, we're very, very excited.
Okay, great. Questions from the board?
Hi, it's Ann McDonald. I just wanted to make sure I understood what the planned traffic flow is here. Is, is the, make sure I'm reading these drawings correctly. The plan is that you would enter the drive-through off of Albany Avenue towards the north, and then the cars would exit after passing those parallel parking spaces and driving back through the lot, back on Albany towards the southern part of the drawing. Is that right?
Yeah, technically, all of the drives, excluding the drive-through, are, are two-way traffic, and so the drive-through could be, you, you could get to the drive-through from any of the entrances on Lincoln or Albany. I think a, a typical traffic, traffic pattern would be from the northern entrance on Albany, but if someone were to enter from Lincoln through the shared access with the adjacent shopping center, they could navigate around the site and enter the drive-through as well.
Got it. Thank you.
Any others from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. We've got what we need, so thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right, let's go to a special use, calendar, calendar number three sixty-eight dash twenty-one dash S. I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation as there's counsel here. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to convert the existing three-story mixed-use building to residential building with three dwelling units, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated June eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by Kennedy Mann Architecture.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. For the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Sam Banks. Before we begin, if you don't mind, I would like to take a super short minute to introduce everyone to our newest colleague, Ashley Ficore. Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Sanchez, I'm sure you can appreciate, Ashley just took the bar exam, so she is patiently awaiting the results. I have anxiety just remembering how that was, so if everyone can put forth some positive vibes and some extra prayers for Ashley, we hope to know very soon, but so Ashley will be a new attorney with the office, and for those of you who don't know, Daniel Bax, who was previously with us, did move back to Texas so that he and his family could be closer to their own families, who are both from Texas, so we're very sad to lose Daniel, but extremely ecstatic to have Ashley a part of the team, so hopefully.
Welcome, Ashley. I'll, I'll add one more commissioner to the list of bar passers.
Oh, McDonald, I'm sorry.
Commissioner McDonald, we're full of lawyers now, different types, though.
Prefer not to focus too much on the bar experience, though.
Commissioner, and I apologize, I totally missed that. I'm, yeah, I'm having flashbacks myself just being there. So anyways, thank you for a couple minutes.
Welcome, Ashley, and tell, tell Dan we'll, we'll, of course, we'll, of course, miss him.
Very much, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you again. With that, I just want to make sure that we do have all my witnesses. It appears that Mr. O'Brien did make it on. I know he was having some computer problems earlier, but it looks like he's on, and I just want to make sure of one more witness, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. There should be a Mr. Joshua Glazier. Dash, if you're on, can you raise your hand or vocalize? For tech support, I gave you an email initially for Mr. Glazier. He may be dialing in from a telephone, however. I gave it earlier, but it's three one two, two zero eight, one six zero zero.
There is no phone caller in the meeting, and there's no Joshua Glazier.
Counselor, what is his role?
Um, he is just, he is the president of the community organization. You do have a letter on file from him. And he just was going to provide a little extra local color if, if necessary, but I think we can proceed if he's able to join. That's great, but you do have a letter of support from the Mid-North Association for which he is the president.
Yep, let's get started, and if anyone wants to shoot him a text, and we've got him on at some point, helpful, but, you know, not, potentially not necessary.
Perfect. Then I will go ahead and introduce my witnesses, and then perhaps, Mr. Chairman, you may throw them in. And so once more, for the record, my name is Sarah Barnes, and I'm an attorney with the law offices of Sam Banks. I'm super happy to be here today on behalf of the applicants, Mr. Joshua Kruger and his wife Fabrizia Hadlow, who are both joining us virtually. As well, we have our project architect, Mr. Matthew Mann, and our astute MAI appraiser, Terrence O'Brien. And then as well, we did have Mr. Glazier, but we'll proceed with the witnesses that are present.
Perfect. Counselor, work for you that I just go down the list?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Great. Let's start with Joshua Kruger. Can you please state your name and address?
You're muted, Josh.
Sorry about that. Joshua Krieger, twenty-two fifty-two North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one four.
Great, thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth? Great, thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Next up, Fabrizia Hadlow. Can you state your name and address as well?
Yes, Fabrizia Hadlow, twenty-two fifty-two North Clark Street, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six one four.
Thank you, Fabrizia. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. And now Matthew Mann, you please state your name and address?
Yep, my name is Matthew Mann. I am the architect and partner of Kennedy Man Architecture, twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-eight twenty-two West Montrose, Chicago, six oh six one eight. Can you hear me?
Hey, everybody. Sorry, I, I froze up. Can, can you hear me? Counselor, can you confirm whether I'm heard?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you are heard now, but you did freeze momentarily.
Okay, sorry. I try to follow the best wifi, but can never really tell. Okay, so Matthew, will you please start over with your name and address?
Absolutely. My name is Matthew Mann. I am architect and partner of Kennedy Man Architecture. The address is twenty-eight twenty-two West Montrose, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six one eight.
Great. Okay, I got it. Can you guys hear me? Cool. Let me know if there's issues. I'm gonna alert someone in the office. Not sure that'll help, but just, just flag me if there's issues. So next up, we've got Terrence O'Brien. Are you on?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yeah, Terrence, can you state your name and address, please?
Terrence M. O'Brien, maintained offices at seventy-three eighty-three North Lincoln Avenue, Lincolnwood, Illinois, professional real estate appraiser consultant.
Thank you, Terrence. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceeding?
I do.
Great. And we, of course, acknowledge your expertise based on many, many past appearances. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got Paul Wasnicki. Are you on?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Mr. Wasnicki is not going to be joining us today.
Okay, not necessary. Okay. All right, Counselor, with that, you can feel free to take it away.
Thanks so much. And before I begin, just one more matter of general housekeeping, so to speak. I, I want to extend my gratitude on behalf of our entire team to Ms. Radzovic with the Department of Planning and Development, as well as Mr. Valenziano and Commissioner Murphy. They really went to incredible efforts to continue to engage with us throughout the review of this proposal. I know Ms. Radzovic and myself were both out to the property even recently, just taking photographs because this is such a transitional neighborhood and it keeps evolving. So I just, again, once more, really wanna send our gratitude out to them because we were able to resolve a lot of questions without interfering with the time for this, of this hearing. So thank you. With that, Mr. Chairman, be careful what you wish for. I know you said that you like photographs. So I personally went out to the property, like I said, a few times, because it changes so much every day, and took an abundance of photographs that you have before you here today. Thank you, Ms. Vaz, because you should have all been provided copies of this supplemental activity as well, which should hopefully give you a pretty good idea of this neighborhood. Towards that end, as described more robustly in our findings of fact, and further demonstrated again in the exhibits, Mr. O'Brien's report and the photographs. The subject property represents one of seven traditional, exactly like you see there, more traditional Chicago gray stone walk up buildings that comprises the south end of this block in Lincoln Park, the twenty-two hundred, the west side of the twenty-two hundred block of North Clark Street. The subject property is presently improved with one of those walk up buildings, as you see on the photograph above. The subject property is improved with a three story with partially above grade basement, typically referred to as a garden unit. The building as currently configured contains a single simplex unit on each the first, second, and third floors, while the basement on that garden area remains vacant and unimproved. Historically speaking, the second and third floors of the existing building have been occupied as dwelling units, apartments, while the first floor, again, historically speaking, has been occupied by a rotation of non-residential uses, most recently a small clothing boutique that shuttered unfortunately a little over a year ago. So in, in need of some work due to its age and continual tenant turnover, Mr. Kruger and his wife purchased the property with the intent to undertake an interior gut rehabilitation of each of the units located within the building to bring them up to code and function pursuant to current building standards, as well as to reconfigure some of the dwelling units therein, also, again, to make them more functional under today's standards. The real draw to this particular property, though, was driven by Mr. Kriegers and Ms. Hadlow's desire to make this neighborhood their permanent residence for their family. After being priced out of almost all of the other homes and condominiums in the area, the applicants found the subject property, which, again, although in need of a lot of work, they found to be an ideal place to call home, which is what brings us here before this board today, because the subject property, although improved with what can typically be viewed as a more residentially designed building, is located in a B one-three zoning district and therefore would require a special use in order to establish a dwelling unit below the second floor. Although we tend to focus on the unique conditions that affect a property when we're talking through a petition for a variation, this adjective is also quite relevant in assessing the character of a neighborhood and the compatibility of a particular use therein, both of which considerations provide the basis for almost all of the special use criteria. I believe, I hope, that perhaps even Commissioner Toyah would agree that this particular west oriented block of Clark Street is truly exceptional, as is the subject property. Coincidentally, not one of the eleven properties that comprise this particular west block of Clark Street is alike in shape or orientation. By a more relevant description, this segment of Clark Street is the textbook definition of a transitional block, quite literally linking the beginning of the higher intensity commercial retail and entertainment corridor to the north, which starts one block to the north and extends for over seven city blocks in that same direction, all the way up to Diversity Parkway. And then connecting to the south, to the historic residential district to the south, which too starts one block to the south and extends at least seven blocks in that same direction down to North Avenue. The entire seven blocks moving north along Clark Street, which does not include or encompass the subject twenty-two hundred block, is zoned for commercial and business uses and is designated as a pedestrian retail street pursuant to the Chicago zoning ordinance. Moving south, however, including almost the entire twenty-one hundred block of Clark Street on both sides, is owned purely residential, as well as indicated the entire east side of the twenty-two hundred block of Clark Street, which is predominantly occupied by Francis Parker's Secondary School, which is also zoned residential. Excuse me. The broader phenomenon can actually be observed from a cursory snapshot of this west side of the twenty-two hundred block of Clark Street alone, where the seven buildings comprising the south end of the block, which includes the subject property, are all three story and four story walk ups with partially above grade basements and elevated first floors. The facades of each of these buildings are set back off the sidewalk at least five feet, and the pedestrian entrances to which are either elevated or recessed, requiring access only by a set of five to ten stairs going up and going down. And that, as such, their buildings are not directly nor effortlessly accessible from the pedestrian way or the sidewalk. These same seven buildings, including the subject property, all have partially above grade basements that are occupiable with natural light and meaningful floor to ceiling ratios, as well the facades of each of these buildings, including the subject property, are more consistent with the residential design patterns with detailed furnaces and broken up individual windows, providing a clear delineation between the units and providing privacy for the same. These seven buildings mimic the rows and rows and rows of residences that saturate the neighborhood and Clark Street to the south, including on the very next block of Sedgwick, which dead ends into the subject property. Conversely, the four properties that comprise the north end of the subject block are all improved with two story and three story apt grade buildings, the entire facades of which, including the entrances directly above the sidewalk. And each of these buildings is rendered with your more traditional storefront features, including floor to ceiling, fully transparent windows and doors, and a separate entrance for the units on the upper floors. These buildings do not appear to have occupiable basements. As you move north along Clark Street, a majority of the buildings mimic the more traditional Chicago storefronts as just described, which is likely why these sectors of Clark Street are designated as pedestrian retail streets, as opposed to our segment, which is not a designated pedestrian retail street. The very few randomly cited walk up buildings that can be found along these northern segments of Clark Street tend to have vacancies below the second floor, much like the subject property, or are occupied by businesses that tend to be more exclusive and residential in nature. Fitness studio, private fitness studios, hair salons, and spas. Towards these very same ends, one of the challenges that Mr. Kruger, who has been managing both residential properties and commercial properties within the city for over fifteen years, faced in designing a program that would allow for the preservation and reactivation of the subject building is the fact that the first floor, which is elevated, and the garden level, which is recessed, are not easily navigable from the public way. Accordingly, these units are not ADA accessible, which alienates an entire faction of individuals from patronizing any business that may occupy that unit. As such, these types of units are not generally attractive to business owners, which is why there has been turnover in which is why we believe there has been such turnover in this building. In fact, of the seven walk up buildings that comprise this north end of the block, with regard to the first floors and basements, at least two are occupied by administrative offices for the school across the street, which, again, is zoned residential, while the immediately adjacent building to the south of the subject property is occupied by an intimate members only platty studio. None of these operations, therefore, are generally open to the public. On the other hand, of the other four walk ups on the block, which includes the subject property, only one building immediately adjacent to the subject property to the north is fully occupied. Based on the permit records and general observation, twenty-two fifty-four North Clark Street, again, immediately adjacent to the north, is a four story, three units, all residential building, making it almost identical to that being proposed by the applicant. The other three walk up buildings, again, including the subject property are all.
Counselor, sorry to interject.
That's okay.
Confirm that this introduction's coming to a close.
Yep.
We, as you know, we, and I say it with the most respect, because your reports are very good. We've seen, we've seen the report, and often this is a lot of things we could be getting from your witnesses. Stronger to get from your witnesses. So we've really got to take to heart like the spirit of being concise, because we need pace of the meeting to, to continue. So with that, go ahead.
All right. Well, with that, I can even probably conclude there. I know there's been a lot more scrutiny regarding these types of special uses. So I just wanted to make sure that the board had a factual background for making a decision. Obviously, all of these observations and facts are in our findings of fact, they're in Mr. O'Brien's report. And therefore, I do not need to spew anymore at you today, but I will go ahead then and get on to our witnesses. Um, a real, oh, actually, we'll start with Mr. Krieger and Ms. Hadlow. If, Mr. Krieger, if you can state your name and just your name for the record once more.
Yeah, Josh Krieger.
Thank you. And as already described, you and your wife were drawn to this property because you have been looking in the neighborhood for a new home within which to raise your family. Is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And towards that end, you've actually already undertaken some renovations to the existing building pursuant to all proper permits to allow for the rehabilitation of the existing dwelling unit on the third floor. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes, on the third floor.
And you and your wife have been trying your best to, to reside in that third floor unit while you, you, again, either await the approval of this special use, wherein you can locate your permanent residence, or you try and find a different one. But that unit has shown to be a little too small and and not functional for you and your wife. Is that correct?
That's right.
And, and in fact, your wife has certain physical limitations that also make it difficult to navigate those three floors of stairs. Is that right?
Yeah, being on a first and second floor is much more conducive to, to what our requirements are from a personal.
So your programming then calls for the reconfiguration of the existing units within the interior of the building to allow for a single duplex unit to be located between the first floor and the second floor, and that's the unit within which you and your wife would like to reside. Is that right?
Yes, that's right.
Thank you. And then you would, since the basement is currently unoccupied and not improved, you would be also seeking to permit the interior buildout of that basement for an additional dwelling unit. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And that's permitted as a right under the, the density, the number of units is permitted as a right under the current zoning. Is that true?
Yes.
Thank you. And just real quickly, Mr. Krieger, when you purchased, after you purchased the property, I know you and your wife have been working on the, the programming for just about a year. You have been actively engaging with the Mid North Association, as well as their members who are also residents in the neighborhood. Is that true?
Yes, that's right.
And as I indicated earlier, we actually have a letter of support from the Mid North Association. Is that also correct?
Yes, it is.
And to, prior to this hearing, we had a virtual meeting with Alderman Smith and her staff. Is that also correct?
Yes.
And as a result of that meeting, not only was Alderman Smith very happy to have you a part of the community, but she too has issued a letter of support. Is that also correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, you should also have a letter of support from Alderman Smith's office in the record. It was tendered as supplemental activity. So with that, if any, if there's any questions for the applicant from any other commissioners, we'd be happy to entertain those. Otherwise, otherwise, I can go to, I think you're muted, Mr. Chairman.
Let's, let's just, you know, board members, feel free to throw out questions, but, but unless there are any right now, let's, let's, let's move this thing along.
Yep, I'm not going to. Well, I'll put Mr. Mann on real quickly. Mr. Mann, can you just once more state your name for the record?
Matthew Mann.
And you are the project architect who prepared the design for the renovation and interior reconfiguration of the existing building. Is that correct?
It is.
And in your professional opinion, does the adaptive reuse of the first floor and basement of this building as programmed meet all of the standards and criteria for a special use as set forth in the current zoning ordinance?
Yes, it does.
And, Mr. Mann, you were given Um, and Mr. Mann, you were given a copy of the findings of fact prior to this hearing. If you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in those documents?
Yes, it would.
Thank you. Um, and then, Mr. Krieger, sorry, can you go back on the record just one more time? I have one last question. As well, you, um, were given an affidavit prior to the hearing, as well as a copy of the findings of fact. As well, would you also, um, continue to testify consistent with the statements made in those documents here today?
Uh, yes.
Thanks. Last, but absolutely not least, Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Um.
I'm here.
Uh-huh. So for the sake of time, since I already commandeered all of it, it appears, um, may you just, um, you were retained by the applicant in order to evaluate the subject property and the proposal and the immediately adjacent neighborhood in order to determine whether or not the proposed residential use below the second floor meets all of the standards and criteria for a special use under the current zoning ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
And did you have an opportunity to go out and personally observe the subject property and the neighborhood?
I'm familiar with the subject area, having done other work. And then more specifically, on July thirty-first of this year, I did inspect the subject and surrounding area to familiarize myself with land uses and the proposed use for the subject.
And in, um, evaluating the neighborhood and the subject property, was it your determination that, uh, an all-residential use at this property is compatible with the other uses that are in the neighborhood?
Yes, in my opinion, is most compatible. It would not have any adverse impact on surrounding property values. And it is be keeping with the character of the area, specifically the area south of Belden Avenue, going south to Dick.
Perfect. Um, and to, again, as previously described, since the entrances to the building are elevated and/or recessed, um, is it also your opinion that a residential use is more in the, more keeping with the public convenience as opposed to a non-residential use for those who may be limited to not being able to navigate stairs?
Yes, as a matter of fact, not only the fact that the subject first floor is elevated, but also the building is set back off the lot. If you were to go a half a block to the north where there is some retail and then going down to Fulton Avenue, you'll see where the overwhelming majority of buildings that are utilized for commercial retail on the ground floor are at grade level with the walk. They're not elevated like the subject. And they're also at, uh, the property line, not set back as is the subject.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. So, um, finally, in summation, is it, is it your professional?
I'm, go ahead. I, I, for a minute, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Lastly, then, in summation, um, and I'm sorry, Mr. O'Brien, and your findings and your opinions, you place, you put those in writing and submitted them to the board as a report. Is that correct?
Yes, I did address all the criteria set forth in the ordinance pertaining to the special use requested here.
Thank you. And then finally, is it in your professional opinion that the proposed special use does meet all the standards and criteria?
In my opinion, it most definitely does meet all the, uh, criteria set forth in the ordinance. One other thing I would like to emphasize, in the two blocks between Belden and Dickens, approximately sixty-three percent of the properties running along Clark Street are zoned and/or used for residential or institutional and park purposes. And I think that really sets the character for those two blocks from Belden to Dickens.
Amazing. Thank you so much, Mr. O'Brien. Um, so if you were to continue to testify anymore today, would your testimony be consistent with the statements that were made in your report?
Yes, it would. I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, sorry. You're perfect. Okay. Um, I have no further questions for my witnesses, Mr. Chairman. Once more, we would be happy to entertain the boards.
And Chairman, this is tech support. Josh Glazier has also joined.
Okay, I'm not sure we need Josh. Um, uh, you know, questions, questions from the board, and would anyone like to hear, um, support from the neighborhood group?
I just have a brief question for Mr. O'Brien.
Great.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien, did you hear, uh, Counsel's description of the buildings in the neighborhood, um, their uses and the nature of any limited, um, retail that is on the block where the subject property is located? Did you hear that discussion in her initial presentation?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
And, um, is it your testimony today that, um, those factual representations that she made about those buildings in the surrounding area were accurate and consistent with what you saw when you visited the, the area?
To the best of my recollections, yes, they are consistent. And also, I believe there are substantial number of photos that would complement the description given by Ms. Barnes pertaining to the area and land uses in that area.
And much of that information was in the materials you previously submitted that were referenced before?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Okay, we've got everything we need on this one. So thank you very much, everyone. We'll take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Much. Um, lastly, Mr., oh, Mr. Chairman, um, Nick Fatikas will be, has some cases later on in the agenda. He will be logging back in, um, under mine.
Okay, perfect. Cool. Yeah, thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, of course. Thanks, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Yeah, thank you. Good. Calendar number three sixty-nine dash twenty-one dash S at eighteen thirty-four, or sorry, eighteen thirty-one West of one. I believe Counsel on this is Alvin Charity. So as Alvin gets situated, I'm going to read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a dual-lane drive-through to serve an existing fast-food restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, McDonald's Corporation. And the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site, site and landscape plans dated September thirteen, twenty-twenty-one, with truck turning plan dated September fourteen, twenty-twenty-one, prepared by Watermark Engineering Resources, LTD, and the building plans dated August eleventh, twenty-twenty-one, and elevations dated September tenth, twenty-twenty-one, all prepared by Lingual Design Group Incorporated. Okay, do we have, uh, oh, I see you.
Here I am.
Yep, how are you?
All right, good, fine. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the, uh, Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Alvin Charity of Charity and Associates, P.C., twenty North Clark Street, Suite thirty-three hundred. And I represent the applicant McDonald's Corporation with respect to this request for a special use. Present to testify on behalf of the applicant are Joseph Menoric, Area Construction Manager for U.S. Restaurants for McDonald's Corporation, and Terrence O'Brien, a licensed M.A.I., uh, real estate appraiser. Um, at this time, I'd like to call my first witness, Joe Menoric. Mr. Menoric, are you on? Joe?
Uh, Chairman, I don't see Joseph Menoric unless he's signed in as a different name.
Okay, let's see.
All right, let me see if I can reach him. I know he's been, he's been, uh, texting me that he was on.
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Menoric, if you're on, feel free, um, from a different name, raise your hand.
I'm calling him right now. Yeah, he says that he's on. He can see my picture and he can see the, uh, aerial. But for some reason, he's on his-
Raise his hand in Zoom. There is a option on-
Raise your hand, Joe. Can you raise your, at the bottom, there's a, raise your hand.
Almost, he could potentially be in the live stream, right?
If you, if you look, if you take your scroll down with your mouse to the bottom of the screen, there should be a raise hand.
Yes, unless he's in the live stream, uh, in Zoom.
All right, you need to then try logging back in then.
Yeah, and make sure, um, Counsel, can you make sure he's logging into the Zoom and not the live stream?
Are you logging into the Zoom through the, uh, the link that I sent you? That's exactly what happened. I'm going to have him log in. Uh, he joined through, uh, the live stream.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman? Can you hear me?
Yep, I can.
Okay, Mr. Menoric will be joining, he, uh, will be joining us in a few minutes. If I may, if we can proceed and I can get some, at least some of our testimony in the record while he joins.
Uh, we, so we, um, we, we've got to have him here, um, as applicant. Um, so I think the other option is just to go to the next matter and come back to you.
Okay, why don't you do that then, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, okay, good. And just make sure he's on. All right, so we are going to go, um, to calendar number three seventy dash twenty-one dash. Okay, so Counsel Aberry, Eka, Eka Chukwu, are you on?
Um.
Turn me, I have to accept. I, I see a berry.
Turn me, a berry has to accept, uh, to be promoted to panelist.
Okay, cool. Let's see. Oh, Counselor, I think you denied, um, to be promoted. We're trying to get you promoted. You've got to accept.
I, I just unmuted him from, as an attendee, Chairman. I, I don't think he's able to.
There we go.
So what do you want me to create? Join us as attendee? Okay, you see me now?
Yeah, we can hear you. You don't have your camera on, but that, that's okay unless you want your camera on. We, we go either way.
Uh, that's my camera for goodness sake. Come on.
You have to accept to join as panelist.
Oh, join as panelist, okay.
Right.
Oh, there we go. Um, we've got camera on now, Aberry.
Yes.
Can, can you speak? Is your, your sound okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And, and, okay, so, um, just to confirm, you represent, you're legal rep of the applicant. So I'm going to go ahead and read the department's recommendation.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Um, and, and to confirm, are, are you legal counsel?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so for calendar number three seventy dash twenty-one dash S, the Department of Plan, Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair salon.
Okay, thank you. Um, for introduction purposes, my name is Aberry, AKA Chukwu, located at fifty-three West Jackson Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois. I represent Ureal, um, Beauty Hair Briding, located at fifty-two East one hundred and tenth Place, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six two eight. The applicant seeks special use permits in order to use the premises, uh, fifty-two East one hundred and tenth Place, Chicago, for a hair braiding shop. Applicant is not the owner of the building, but runs from the owner, Mr. Howard. Uh, two witnesses will testify today, uh, Mr. Ablewavi Placto, the owner of Ureal Beauty, and Mr. Hugh Edfords.
Yeah, Counsel, just to chime in really quick, is, um, is Hugh Edfords on? We need him to be on, but we're not.
Yes, he is.
He's with you?
Yeah.
Cool, sorry about that. Go right ahead.
Okay.
Cool, we've got all the team in office. Good.
Okay. Um, uh, Ablewavi is the president and owner of Ureal Beauty. Um, we'll be brief here, Mr. Chairman. Um, please state your name for the record.
I'm Bluewavi Placto.
Okay. Are you the owner of Ureal Beauty Hair Briding?
Yes.
And this, you are currently located at fifty-two East one hundred and place, one hundred and tenth Place, Chicago, Illinois?
Yes.
You conduct your hair braiding business at this address?
Yes, Counselor, Counselor, really quick, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna get the applicant sworn in. If that's okay, if I cut in. Um, so Ms. Placto, would you please state your name and address for me?
Ablewavi Placto, fifty-two East one hundred and tenth Place, Chicago, Illinois, six zero six two eight.
Great, thank you very much, ma'am. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Um, you are the owner of Ureal Beauty, the applicant in this case. And you are seeking special use permit to allow you to continue to use this location for your hair braiding business. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, we submitted the findings of fact and affidavit along with the findings of fact. Um, if I ask if you were to testify today regarding, uh, the answers in the findings of fact, will your answers be consistent with the reports in the findings of fact and the affidavit to submit it?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, that will be all for her. We'll call Mr. Edfords, the appraiser in this case. Mr. Appra, uh, Mr. Edfords, uh, prepared a report which we submitted along with the findings of fact. So.
Yep, and, uh, and Mr. Edfords, can you please state your name and address as well?
Yes, Hugh T. Edfords. I'm, I'm working with Urban Real Estate Research, three sixteen North Michigan Avenue in Chicago. And I, my resident, one of my residents is eleven fifty North Lakeshore Drive, Unit eighteen K, uh, in Chicago.
Great. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you. And we, um, I know you appeared before, um, the board before, um, but I, I don't believe, well, I've, I've been chair at least. Um, but, uh, thank you for providing information and we acknowledge you as an expert.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Edfords, um, Ureal Beauty engaged you to come out to, um, appraise the property for this application?
Yes, I made the inspection of the property and the neighborhood, so I'm very familiar with what is, what it currently is and what the continuation of the business, it appears to be very successful.
Okay. So you went out there to, uh, Okay, so you went out there to, um, assess the appropriateness of the proposed use of the location, is that correct?
Exactly, yes.
And you prepared a report?
Yes.
And that report we submitted to the board, uh, as part of the findings of fact?
Yes.
If I, we, if I were to ask you questions regarding the report, will your answers be consistent with the reports that we submitted to the board?
Yes.
That'll be all for him.
Okay, okay, great.
I don't know if the board has any questions for Mr. Edfores or for the applicants.
Yeah, Ms. Plactor, can you tell us a little bit, so, um, did you, did you get cited? Cause my understanding is that you've been operating, or can you give a history of what, what brought you here today?
Yes, um, actually, I'm very excited to be in the demo hall because a lot of good things are going on there now, like now, good, good.
Mm-hmm. So he wants to know, you, it wants to know if you were cited before we started this whole application. Were you cited by the city?
Oh, no.
Okay, um, so did you, and, and Counselor, feel free to the, um, you can explain as well, um, my understanding is that the, the salon is already in operation, right? Uh, okay, so, so what, um, inspired you guys beyond, you know, good business practice to come in now to get, um, the special use?
Yeah, uh, what happened was that I think the fire department came to do check in the building and all that, and they requested for, um, how permits to do business in that location. She showed them her, uh, Illinois license as a hair braider, and then they told her, no, that's not what you need, that's, that's one, but you need a permit from the city of Chicago. So it was after that visit that she contacted me for us to do this, because they found out that if she doesn't have a permit, that the city will be, will come knocking.
Okay, yeah, yeah, they will, we, we will, I should say, so, um, okay, so it, it was rooted from this, a form of citation, um, okay, so, you know, with that, I would ask.
They didn't really cite her, they didn't really cite her for anything, but they just informed her that she has to go and do this, otherwise the city will come knocking, yes.
Okay, okay, got it. Um, all right, well, so for purposes of understanding her operations, um, can you give a little bit of a description of, I, I see the plan, how many employees, um, are in the salon? And, uh, if she's gone to school, um, for this type of work and, and things like that?
Um, yeah, she does not have, um, employees, and she has gone to, uh, the training for hair braiding, and she applied for the certificate that the state of Illinois requires them to apply the license, that the state of Illinois requires them to apply. So what they usually do is that they go by appointment, and, uh, sometimes she calls in other hair braiders, um, to come in and help, because it takes about maybe between three and six hours to braid one hair. So sometimes she calls in other hair braiders, other professional hair braiders to come in and assist with braidings, so that it will go faster for the customer. So the chairs that we see here are where, um, when she has like maybe more than, um, two people coming at the same time, because some, some people even do is by appointments, and people like to walk in sometimes, so in that case, we'll just call around and say, are you available to come in and help? And then they use these chairs. She has ample parking, is street parking, um, if you look in the picture of the building, outside of the building, it says street parking, they don't have problem with, uh, parking, and there is a train station right next on, I think it's on the one hundred and eleventh street, so people either come, drive, or use the train or bus. So it's very, very public transportation accessible for the, uh, customers, so the issue of parking is not there. And then her time oppression is from eight thirty AM to, um, eight thirty PM, oh, sorry, seven thirty PM, Monday through Saturday, and Sundays are by appointment.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Okay, I think we have what we need, uh, Ms. Plactor, so thank you for, for coming in today, and we will take this under consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, cool, so, um, let's circle back to calendar number three sixty-nine dash twenty-one dash S to Counselor Charity. Yeah, were we able to get, um, the applicant on?
Yes, Joseph Menorik, uh, should be on, uh, if you could, uh, allow him access.
Yes, good, good morning, or good afternoon.
All right.
I think we have him, Mr. Chairman.
Difficulties earlier.
Nope, no worries, so, um, give me a second, I'm gonna read the department's recommendation, um, give me a second to find it, cause I broke things on the ground. Okay, thanks. So for calendar number three sixty-nine dash twenty-one dash S, Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish a dual lane drive-through to serve an existing fast food restaurant, provided that the special use is issued solely to the applicant, McDonald's Corporation, and the development is consistent with the design and layout of the site and landscape plans dated September thirteen, twenty twenty-one, with truck turning plan dated September fourteen, twenty twenty-one, prepared by Watermark Engineering Resources LTD, and the building plans dated August eleventh, twenty twenty-one, and elevations dated September tenth, twenty twenty-one, all prepared by Lingual Design Group, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, my name is Elvin Charity of Charity and Associates, P.C., address is twenty North Clark Street, Suite thirty-three hundred. I have two witnesses today. The first is Joseph Menorik, Area Construction Manager, U.S. Restaurant Development for McDonald's Corporation, and Terrence O'Brien, Licensed MAI Appraiser. At this time, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call my first witness, Joseph Menorik.
Perfect, yep, let's get, uh, let's get Joseph sworn in.
Okay, Joseph.
Mr. Menorik, will you state your name and address?
Uh, Joseph Menorik, McDonald's USA, seven eleven Jory Boulevard, Oakbrook, Illinois, six zero five two three.
Thank you, and you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Menorik, in your capacity as Area Construction Manager for McDonald's, are you familiar with the McDonald's restaurant at eighteen thirty-one West Devon? The drawings for the proposed improvements and the area surrounding the subject restaurant?
Yes.
And, um, you have submitted a signed affidavit with the findings of fact in advance of your testimony, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And would your testimony be consistent with the statements in your affidavit?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to, uh, submit to any questions that the, the, um, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals may have of this witness at this time?
Okay, great, um, any questions from the board? I guess, yeah, yeah, go ahead. Okay, I guess a question I have, um, to the applicant, uh, pretty general question, but I know there's already an existing, uh, one lane drive-through. Was the two lane drive-through inspired in any way by traffic going out onto the street? Um, increased demand or a combination of both?
Combination of both.
Okay, um, so I think we'll, we'll want to hear a little bit, and maybe this goes to the other witness, but how this layout will cure the traffic issue, especially if there's been flow onto the street?
So to answer that quite, so to answer that question, the, uh, the, the double lane drive-through, the side-by-side, as it's called, uh, will push more cars through the, the, um, the drive-through as it sits, uh, obviously provide more, more time between the, uh, between the cash booth and the, the order points, and, uh, overall, uh, again, uh, move more cars through the drive-through to alleviate any, any, uh, potential stack, and, uh, as you'll note on the site plan, is that the, um, the entrance in the southwest corner has been moved to an exit only.
Okay.
So that the primary, uh, traffic flow will be from the, uh, call it the northernmost, um, entry off of North Ridge, and then the circulation will go up through the drive-through to prevent any of that immediate stack out onto North, uh, Ridge Avenue.
Okay, so both of entry and exit occurs on, on North Ridge?
Uh, correct, there, there is an exit on North Ridge, uh, that's primarily gonna be for, uh, cars leaving the parking stalls that face that direction, as, uh, as well as perhaps, um, uh, truck deliveries or any, uh, trash, uh, collection as well.
Okay, and is there, um, how about on Devon? Is there entry and exit? It's, uh, I'm just trying to see in the photo and.
Uh, there is, there's a entry-exit on the northwest corner as well as the northeast corner currently.
Okay, have you experienced any, you know, stacking that's, um, flowed out onto Devon?
Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, other questions from the board? Okay, Counselor, I think we can go to the other witness.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this time I'd like to call, uh, Terrence O'Brien. I believe, uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. O'Brien's already been sworn in.
Yep, yep, sworn in, and we, uh, we've acknowledged his expertise.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Ryan, uh, you did prepare a, you did go out and inspect the site, uh, the plans for the site and the improvements of the site, is that correct?
Yes, I inspected the site back in March twenty-seventh to twenty-one, more recently at September tenth, twenty twenty-one, for familiarizing myself with not only the use of the subject, but land uses in the surrounding area.
And in connection, uh, with your inspection and your review of the plans, uh, you did prepare a report, it was submitted with the findings of fact in which you addressed issues determined to the application and the satisfaction of the requirements for a special use for this particular, uh, proposed, uh, double drive-through improvements, is that correct?
That's correct.
And would your testimony today be consistent with the professional opinions and statements in your report?
Yes, it would.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes, uh, uh, Mr. O'Brien's testimony. If there are questions from the, uh, members of the ZBA, we'll take them at this point in time. I'd like to also note, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that I did submit, uh, uh, to zoning board of appeal staff, an email from Jeffrey Cabbage, the Director of Policy and Economic Development for Alderman, Andre Vasquez, in which he indicated that the Alderman had no objection to this application.
Okay, great, thank you. Any, any questions from the board? All right, we've got what we need, um, so thank you, everyone, for presenting, and we'll take this under consideration.
And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize to you and, uh, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the delay.
Oh, no worries, we worked it out, so thanks very much. Okay, let's go, um, into a screen of special uses, um, with Counselor Fatikas, that I'm hoping we can get through pretty quickly. So first up is calendar number three seventy-one dash twenty-one dash S at fourteen twenty-five North Milwaukee, suite number two. Counselor Fatika says you're, I see you on, as you get settled, I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art facility, tattoo piercing shop within unit number two on the second floor. Okay, Counselor, take it away.
Okay, great, thank you, Chairman. Uh, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of San Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Professional Piercing Incorporated. Uh, the applicant has a lease for a salon suite located on the second floor of the mixed-use building at fourteen twenty-five North Milwaukee Avenue, uh, and the applicant, as you said, is, uh, proposing to establish a body, body art studio within his space, and that's specifically suite number two for the record. Um, in order to do so, we're seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a B-three zoning district. Um, I have, uh, testifying witnesses today on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Juan Santiago, and our MAI Appraiser, Mr. Joseph Ryan. Um, and maybe if you want to swear in Juan and Joe, I can try and quickly get through their testimony.
Right, yeah, so Juan, if you're on, can you please state your name and address?
Uh, my name's Juan Santiago, uh, one six two North Humphrey, Oak Park, Illinois, uh, six zero three zero two.
Thank you, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, and, uh, Mr. Joe Ryan, uh, please state your name and address?
Joseph M. Ryan, MAI, President LaSalle Appraisal Group with offices at ninety-four fifty-five South Horn Avenue in Chicago.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, and we acknowledge your expertise based off of many past appearances.
Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Juan, uh, you're the President of the applicant, Professional Piercing Incorporated, is that right?
That's correct.
And you have a lease for the, uh, one of the salon suites in the Solis Salon, um, group, uh, at the second floor, on the second floor of the subject property, is that right?
That's correct.
And again, you're proposing to locate and establish a bar, body art studio in that space, right?
Yes.
And just to be clear, that includes, uh, traditional or typical tattooing as well as, uh, piercing, right?
Correct.
And you're properly certified and licensed by the state to provide those services, is that right?
Correct.
And because there's only one workstation within your salon suite, you'll be the only, um, active body artist working under this license, assuming or provided the zoning board approves the use, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And you intend to operate, uh, seven days a week between twelve PM and, uh, ten PM each day, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And all of your client sessions will be by appointment only, meaning you're not taking walk-ins, um, at, at this location?
Correct.
Juan, uh, is it your understanding that my office provided the board with, uh, witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes.
Thank you very much, um, Mr. Ryan?
And Counselor, just as a heads up, your sound is kind of going in and out.
Sorry, Chairman, we've been trying to fix this, and you hear it hopefully a little bit better.
Yep, yep, I hear.
Uh, Joe, you're familiar with the subject property at fourteen twenty-five North Milwaukee?
I am.
And your assignment was to evaluate whether the requested special use met the criteria for, uh, general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code, is that right?
That's correct.
You, uh, um, did an onsite inspection and evaluated the, uh, makeup of the existing area?
I did.
And you, uh, prepared a written, uh, zoning report detailing your findings and conclusions, is that right?
That's correct.
Briefly, you believe that in this case, all of the special use approval criteria are being met, is that right?
Yes.
Joe, if you were to continue to testify, would your testimony be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Chairman. That concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the proposal.
Great, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Juan. Okay, next up, we are going to calendar number three seventy-two dash twenty-one dash S at nineteen oh two South Lovett. I will go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning, the Department of Planning and Development recommends denial of the proposed body art service. The department finds the proposed use will not be compatible with the residential character of the surrounding area in terms of traffic generation, in terms of traffic generated and operating characteristics, and is not in the interest of the public convenience since it would primarily serve the needs of clientele from outside of the immediate area. Okay, so before we get started, um, let's make sure we have, um, the alderman on, who I believe is, believe is objecting to this.
Uh, no, Chairman, uh, Alderman Sincho Lopez has actually issued a letter of support for the proposal.
Okay, give us a second, Nick. It's my idea, it, yeah, this is, I know this, teacher's word, we've got as a possible opposition, Alderman Lopez. Uh, so let me just clear this out.
Uh, I'm sorry, could there be confusion because Alderman, uh, Sincho Lopez? It's a, there's two, it's a hyphenated last name.
Yeah, it, you know, it probably just got written down wrong in my notes, sorry. Um, I know that the words are kind of nearby, so just wanted to make sure. Um, okay, this is, this is new to me, so let's just go. So last night, it appears that the aldermen changed their minds, so we do not have opposition on this. Instead, Nick, and you can support this as you go through, but I know you just noted that there's actually support. Um, we do have the DPD recommendation of denial, so I think we will have Nancy say something on this. But I just want to lay the groundwork in that way. So what we should do, if you could put on, um, your case in chief, tell us a little bit about what's changed related to that specific piece, and then uh, I want to give Nancy the opportunity to come on and, and describe their recommendation for denial as well as ask any questions.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that, um, you know what, I have two witnesses. Um, Rebecca is on and also, uh, Joe, Joe Ryan. Do you maybe want to swear them in first and then I could just go through my introduction and call my witnesses?
Yep, perfect. Um, so we've got first, uh, Rebecca Iturralde, are you on?
Yes, hi, uh, can you see me?
We can hear you. Yeah, we can hear you, so we're good. Um, will you please state your name and address?
Um, my name's Rebecca Iturralde. Um, the address, uh, that we're here for is nineteen oh two South Levitt Street, uh, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six oh eight.
Great, and do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and we've got Joe Ryan on, who in previous morning and acknowledged his expertise. Um, so with that, Nick, I think you can take it away.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Um, again, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, uh, Becca Iturralde Art LLC. The applicant has a lease for the first floor, ground floor, commercial unit located at the subject property, again nineteen oh two South Levitt. The applicant is proposing to establish a body art studio within that space. In order to do so, we're seeking a special use because the subject property is located in a B-three zoning district. Um, again, my two witnesses are, uh, Becca and Joe Ryan. Um, and with that, Chairman, I would ask to call Becca as my first witness.
Great.
Um, again, Becca, you have, are you the managing member of the applicant?
Yes.
And, uh, you have a lease for that first floor retail unit at the subject property, is that right?
Yes.
And you're proposing to locate and establish a body art studio in that space, is that right?
Yes.
And the range of services you'll provide, um, includes, again, traditional, uh, permanent tattooing and, uh, some limited piercing, is that right?
Yes, it is.
Uh, you have four years of professional experience?
I do.
And you're properly certified by the state of Illinois to provide the services you intend to provide?
Yes.
Now, based on the size of the retail unit, you intend on maintaining four workstations and an additional, or we'll call it a fifth, private station, is that right?
Yes.
And based on the size, again, you intend on hiring up to three additional body artists to help you run the store, is that right?
Yes, over time, I would like to.
And, uh, your plan is to operate seven days a week between twelve PM and nine PM each day, is that right?
Yes.
And all of your client sessions will be scheduled on an appointment-only basis, meaning again, you're not taking in walk-ins, is that right?
That's correct.
And doing that really allows you not only to control your own schedule, but also limit the number of people who are coming to and from the studio on any given day, is that right?
Yes.
And to that point, um, you anticipate scheduling between two and three, uh, client sessions on a typical or any given day, is that right?
Yes.
And that's somewhat standard in what you would expect of any additional body artist that you hire to work at the studio, correct?
Correct.
So with full capacity, uh, on the busiest days, the studio could probably expect to see ten to twelve clients in total, is that right?
Yes, I, I wouldn't anticipate there ever being more than twelve in a day.
And, and again, even at twelve, that's spread out over a nine-hour workday or, or work period, right?
Yes.
Um, and Becca, with respect to the state and city regulations on your type of use, is it true that, um, you, all of your clients are at least eighteen years old?
Yes.
And in fact, you don't allow minors, anybody under the age of eighteen, to even come into this, the studio, is that right?
Right, yes.
Um, and Becca, is it your understanding that my office, uh, filed witness statements on your behalf with the zoning board?
Yes.
And is it, uh, if you were to continue to testify, is it true that you would testify consistent with those statements?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. And again, Chairman, um, if the question comes up, um, Becca worked with Alderman, uh, Sincho Lopez early on in the application process. He asked that we send out the traditional two hundred and fifty-foot notice letter, which we did. My office is not aware of a single objection from anybody in the immediate community. I'm not aware of anybody signed in today to speak in opposition other than DPD's position, uh, regarding the proposal. I just want to make sure that's clear for the record.
Okay, thanks.
Um, and Joe, are you still with us?
I am.
Um, again, you're familiar with the subject property at nineteen oh two South Levitt?
Yes.
The scope of your assignment was to evaluate whether the requested special use would comply with the general criteria for special uses as set forth in the code?
That's correct.
And, um, can you please very briefly describe the general makeup of the immediate area?
Well, eh, this is an old-style Chicago neighborhood that he has, um, uh, quite a bit of storefronts located throughout residential areas and, and they've coexisted this way for over a hundred years.
And Joe, is it true that most of the retail storefronts are oriented or located closer toward the intersection of, of the streets in the immediate area?
Yes, there are some mid-block ones, but, uh, for the most part, they're congregated around the corners.
And in this case, our immediate neighbor is a licensed operating grocery store, is that right?
Yes.
A- and then, to be fair, as the, the blocks, the makeup of the blocks more interior, those, those are more multi-unit residential, is that fair?
Correct. But there, there are some mid-block, um, commercial units, uh, there are some mid-block commercial units that have been converted to residential. Again, this neighborhood has existed, uh, this is the neighborhood that survived the Chicago Fire, so there's uh, the, the, a great deal of mix in this neighborhood.
And Joe, just so that we're clear, the subject property is zoned B-three, is that right?
Yes.
And that means that other retail uses, including personal service salons, um, a retail store, artist space, uh, even a restaurant, would all be permitted uses at the subject property, is that right?
Absolutely, yes.
And again, arguably, those other allowed uses could be more intense or more active compared to a tattoo studio with ten to twelve, uh, scheduled appointments on a daily basis.
Certainly, a restaurant or a convenience store would be, yes.
Uh, and based on your onsite inspection and understanding of the intended use, do you believe all of the approval criteria are met in this case?
Yes, absolutely. This is, uh, this is a low-density use of the site. Uh, there's not going to be any, uh, uh, disruptive signage to the residential uses and, um, uh, it would act and operate like any other personal use.
And Joe, you have again prepared a written report, uh, further explaining your, your findings and conclusions?
Yes.
And if you were, and it's your understanding that report has been submitted to the board, is that right?
That's correct.
And if you were to continue to testify, that testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in the written report, is that right?
Yes, it would be.
Right, um, Chairman, uh, that, that really does conclude our, our case in chief. Um, one other point that I would like to get on the record is we understand that the department has general concerns. I'm not certain whether the general concerns are about the tattoo use or this specific operator and that limited volume. What I would ask the board is if there are remaining concerns regarding signage, hours of operation, things along those lines, we are, we want to be a good neighbor, we've worked with the aldermen to gain support. If there are, short of a, an outright denial, if there are additional conditions that the zoning board feels comfortable to hold the applicant to these commitments, we're wide open to that being incorporated, um, in, into a final resolution. I, I just want to make sure that that is, is out there, um, because we really do believe that the lower-volume studio is really not going to have much of an impact. Uh, and again, that's supported not by my opinion, but by Mr. Ryan's professional, uh, report.
Okay, cool, um, thank you. And so, a couple of quick questions for the applicant before we go to Nancy and the board might have some too. Um, do you intend, um, eh, you stated your hours, can you just clarify when your last appointment would be within those hours? Because I understand sometimes the, the appointments last a while. So just making sure it's actually closed at, at a certain time, not that it's the last appointment at the certain time.
Uh, yes, thank you for the question. Um, I anticipate, uh, scheduling my tattoos for, um, the first one at noon, another one at three PM and another one at five PM. So the five PM one, I would anticipate, um, never, uh, taking longer than four hours. Um, so yeah, we would definitely be leaving by that time, not starting.
Okay, great, and, um, um, uh, also, do you intend to, um, allow clients to bring, uh, friends or family?
Um, especially with, uh, COVID, I, uh, already was putting in place, uh, that I plan to limit, uh, clients to only bring one guest, uh, but, uh, encourage them to please come alone if they're comfortable with that. Um, and then we would ask the guests to stay in the, in the front waiting area of the studio.
Okay, great. Um, other questions from the board? Okay, let's go to Department of Planning and Development, and Nick, of course, uh, you will have an opportunity to speak again in the cross-question. Um, so Nancy, are you on with us?
I am.
Perfect, okay, so can you give us a little bit feedback on the department's recommendation for denial? And, and you're still under oath?
Yes. Um, so when we looked at this application, what we really did is look at it specifically as, as we do with all special uses, specifically in the context of the, the immediate area. In this whole block, if you look at this South, um, Levitt block, it is predominantly residential, and in fact, um, just south of this proposed use, it, it's, it's residential, you know, when you look at the, the view of the, the block. Um, as the attorney had noted, yes, there is a, a grocery store immediately at the corner, but it's one of those small neighborhood grocery stores. And then when you start looking down, you know, there's the Boys and Girls Club across the street, again, of residential kind of community-based use. Our, our evaluation of this particular neighborhood is really that it's a, a residential neighborhood with some local businesses that are really serving the local community. You know, the grocery store is one of those smaller ones that serves the neighborhood, the Boys and Girls Club. You know, you start looking down nineteenth and there's predominantly residential along there, so we were really focusing on this immediate area. And, and it, um, to address one of, um, the attorney's, um, questions in advance, I, I think, um, he asked, or he raised a speculation as to whether we were concerned with the operator. And it's not the operator, it's, it's just this use, which tends, tattoos tend to draw people in from other communities. They tend not to be neighborhood businesses like, like grocery stores and convenience stores and restaurants. The other types of uses that would be permitted here would really be more neighborhood-focused, um, businesses. So that's the reason for our denial. Um, and I think that's it.
Thank you. And, uh, does anyone have questions for, um, anyone on the board first? Any questions for, um, Department of Planning and Development? Okay, Nancy, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do not.
Okay. Okay, great. So, um, I think, Nick, we go back to you, and if you have any questions, of course, for the department. Um, if not, we'll take final questions from the board and move to your closing.
Chairman, I have, I think, two quick questions for Nancy, um, possibly one. Um, Nancy, under the Chicago zoning ordinance, is there any separation requirement between a body art studio and a residential building or residential zoning district?
There is not.
Um.
But if I could, could I expand on that answer?
Yep.
Okay, there is not, but the very nature of a special use, the way the code is set up, special uses are those types of uses that may be permitted within a particular zoning designation, and they're all evaluated by site. So in some cases, and this is why, um, tattoos and other types of uses are deemed special uses, is even though it may be permitted in this underlying zoning district in certain areas, it may not necessarily fit in with the character of a specific site, which is why we go through the special use process.
Well, and then in follow-up to that explanation, equating a use like this to a personal service use, would a personal service use be appropriate at the subject property?
You know, I, the department's general thought about, again, as I explained, is, is tattoos tends to be the type of personal service use category, subcategory, that tends to pull from a larger community area. Um, you know, salons, those types of things, I think, tend to, to, um, gauge more to the community, but I think we'd have to understand each particular application. So I wouldn't say blanketly what would be allowed or not allowed, because again, each special use needs to be evaluated based on the application, what they're proposing to do, and whether or not that particular operation fits in with the character of the area.
And then just simply, or quickly, Chairman, if I can call Becca back as a quick rebuttal, um, to the outside, uh, customer base. Uh, Becca, is it true that you actually live, uh, nearby the subject property?
Uh, yes, I was just gonna ask if I could, um, jump in on this. Um, I myself am one of the neighbors, um, I live in the area, I live three blocks away, um, from this space, and being appointment-only, um, and also being from the area, my client base already are Pilsen residents, they are my neighbors, they are my community, um, and they very much are the ones who have gotten me to the point where I feel that I need a my own studio space. Um, so while I do anticipate that, yes, clients will come from all over the city and likely even out of the city, um, the majority of them will be Pilsen residents and are Pilsen residents, that's the core of my client base.
Thank you, Becca. Chairman, that, that concludes the question. If I could, uh, provide a, a brief closing, uh, we can move on.
Yep, I, I just want to give the board any opportunity, an opportunity Yeah, I, I just want to give the board any opportunity, an opportunity to ask questions. Any questions from the board?
Yeah, this is Jolene Saul. I have a question, um, for Nancy, and I think you mentioned a restaurant, but what, um, uses would be what commercial uses would be allowed as of right, just a few examples?
Um, sorry, I don't have the zoning ordinance up in front of me. Um, but, but in these types of business, okay, the B districts tend to be more of the um, quote-unquote, local business types uses. So exactly what we were talking about, a convenience store, a retail shop, a, a, a restaurant, you know, those are, those are the types of uses. Um, whereas, you know, I'm gonna say a, a C district is, is the type that's gonna, um, typically allow the, the more much more intensive uses like, you know, car washes and all those types of things. So, um, B districts tend to really um, promote the, the smaller, uh, quote-unquote, neighborhood-y type, um, retail uses. And unfortunately, I don't have the.
No, that, that's helpful. Thank you.
And this is, uh, I am McDonald. Nancy, I, I also just had a follow-up similar question for you. And, um, I'm a newer member, so, you know, excuse me if this, you know, has been discussed before. Um, but does the department have data, um, that would support your statement that, that this particular type of business, a tattoo business draws from outside the community? Has there been a study done or any type of data that's been collected to support that, that position?
Um, we don't, but I will tell you that, that these, um, these recommendations are done um, collectively through the zoning administrator, the assistant zoning administrator and, and, and the zoning department staff and and collectively, I'll say between the, the zoning administrator and assistant zoning administrator, they have significant years of experience working on these types of projects. Um, so I think it's more of just knowing, um, or what we've seen, um, anecdotally for the, the types of um, users that we typically see at these types of businesses. There's not an actual report. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Other questions from the board? Okay, Nick, if you've got a, a quick, um.
Very, very quick closing, Chairman. I, I would really hope that in 2021, we're past the position that tattoos are gonna bring in so much of a, a crowd. The proposed body art studio would occupy an existing retail space in a B3 zoning district. The proposed use is low volume, intentionally low volume and by appointment only. And it's a regulated business. The applicant's certified by the state of Illinois to provide the services. The clients have to be at least 18 years old, and we really hope that the board understands just that. Uh, and we ask for your, respectfully, for your support on this application. Thank you.
Great. We'll take this under consideration. Thank you very much, everyone, for your time. Okay, I want to get a couple more in before, uh, we allow our, allow our board members to eat. Um, so let's go to calendar number 373-21-S. Same with Counselor Fatikas. Um, so I'll read the department's recommendation. And this is on 1425 North Milwaukee Avenue, Suite Number Four. Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed body art facility, Tattoo Shop, within Suite Number Four on the second floor.
Thank you, Chairman, again, for the record. Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Southern Beauty Inked LLC. Uh, the applicant has a lease for the salon suite, specifically Suite Number Four, um, at the subject property, 1425 North Milwaukee Avenue. Uh, and again, we're proposing to establish a body art studio in that space. Uh, in order to do so, we need a special use because the subject property is located in a B3 zoning district. Um, I have two witnesses available to testify on behalf of the applicant, Ms. Alyssa Williamson, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Joe Ryan. Chair, if you want to swear them in, I can start witness testimony.
Great. Uh, Alyssa Williamson, will you please state your name and address?
Yes, it's Alyssa Williamson, 1425 at North Milwaukee Avenue, Suite Four.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great, thank you very much. And Joe Ryan is sworn, and he is acknowledged for his expertise.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Alyssa, you're the managing member of the applicant, Southern Beauty Inked LLC, is that right?
Yes.
And you have a lease for one of the salon suites at 1425 North Milwaukee on the second floor, is that right?
Yes.
And specifically, that's Suite Number Four, correct?
Correct.
And you're proposing to locate and establish a body art studio in that space, right?
Yes, sir.
Now, the typical services you're, uh, intending to provide include permanent makeup applications and microblading, um, as well as other cosmetic applications such as lip blush tattooing, ombre, ombre brows, and brow waxing services, is that right?
Correct.
So although you fall within the larger body art category, um, you operate quite differently than a traditional tattoo parlor.
I do.
Um, and, uh, you're also still properly certified by the state to provide the services you intend to provide, is that right?
Correct.
And again, because this is a single workstation, you'll be the only licensed, uh, body artist or makeup artist, uh, working in this suite under this license, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, you intend to operate Monday through Friday between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM?
Yes.
And all of your client sessions will be by appointment only, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, Alyssa, it's your understanding that my office filed witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we provided?
Yes, it would be.
Great. Uh, Joe, um, you're also familiar with the subject property at 1425 North Milwaukee Avenue?
Yes, I am.
Your assignment in this case was to determine whether the requested special use met the general criteria for special use approval per the code.
That's correct, yes.
Um, you completed an onsite inspection of the subject property?
I did.
And based on your inspection of the subject area, you believe that the proposal meets the criteria, uh, required for special use approval, is that right?
Yes, I do.
Joe, you prepared a written report further detailing your findings and conclusions, uh, in this case?
I have, yes.
If you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements, uh, or the statements and conclusions in that report?
Yes, it would be.
Great. Uh, Chairman, that concludes the applicant's case in chief. We'd be happy to answer any questions you or the board members might have.
Okay, great. Um, any questions from the board? Okay, we'll take it under consideration. Uh, thank you very much, everyone, for your time.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're gonna go now to calendar number 374-21-S. Same with Counselor Fatikas, and I'll go ahead and read the department's recommendation. The Department of Planning and Development recommends approval of the proposed hair and nail salon.
Uh, Chairman, again, uh, for the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, The Art of Alchemy Salon LLC. Uh, the applicant has a lease for the one and a half-story, uh, retail building located at 1922 North Damon Avenue. Uh, the applicant is proposing to establish a personal service salon within the entirety of the building. Uh, in order to do so, we're seeking a special use because the subject property is located within a thousand feet of another licensed personal service use. Uh, we have two witnesses, uh, on behalf of the applicant, its managing member, uh, Ms. Lindsay, uh, Vecchione, and our, uh, MAI appraiser again is Mr. Joe Ryan. Uh, if you want to maybe swear in Lindsay and Joe, and I can go from there.
Nick, sorry, uh, my wifi went in and out. Um, can you hear me now?
I can't, yes, yes.
Okay, sorry about that. Um.
I've just, I, I asked if you wanted to swear in Lindsay and Joe, and then I can start my questions.
Okay, yes, so, um, Lindsay Vecchione, and sorry if I'm mispronouncing, um, your name, will you please state your name and address?
Sorry, I was on mute. Hi, uh, Lindsay Vecchione, 1922 North Damon Avenue, Chicago, Illinois, 606-47.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Um, they're sworn in, and, and Joe.
Mr. Chairman, I think you froze again.
Uh, sorry about that. Um, so, uh, we've got Lindsay sworn in, Joe is also sworn in, and his expertise is acknowledged.
Thank you, Chairman.
Again, Lindsay, um, you're the managing member of the applicant, The Art of Alchemy Salon LLC, is that right?
Yes.
And, uh, as I stated, you're, you have a lease for the entire one and a half-story building in 1922 North Damon Avenue, right?
Yeah.
And you're proposing to locate and establish a personal service salon in that space, right?
Correct.
And the range of services includes, uh, a, a broad range, everything from hair cutting, washing, coloring, and styling, um, as well as makeup applications and, uh, even manicure, pedicure, is that right?
Yes.
And you're a licensed beautician in this, with the state of Illinois?
Yep, for 18 years.
And, uh, you intend initially to hire, uh, between four and five, uh, additional stylists, uh, to help you run the store, is that right?
Correct.
And everybody you hire will be properly licensed, um, by the state to provide those services, right?
Yes.
Uh, you'll intend to operate the salon seven days a week from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM each day, is that right?
Yes.
Um, and Lindsay, is it your understanding that my office provided the board, uh, with witness statements on your behalf in this case?
Yes.
Uh, and if you were to continue to testify, would that testimony be consistent with the statements we've provided?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Joe, you're familiar with 1922 North Damon Avenue?
Yes, I am.
Scope of your assignment in this case was to evaluate whether the requested special use met the general criteria for special use approval, is that right?
That's correct.
You physically inspected the subject property?
I did.
And you prepared a written zoning analysis report summarizing your findings and conclusions, uh, for the board, is that right?
I did, yes.
And that report has been submitted to the, uh, zoning board?
I believe so, yes.
Um, and Joe, um, briefly, you believe that in this case, all of the approval criteria are being met for special use approval, is that true?
Yes, all of them, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in your written report, is that right?
Yes, it would be.
Chairman, that, uh, concludes the applicant's somewhat condensed case in chief. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them now.
Great. Um, any questions from the board? I think we've got enough. We'll take this under consideration. Thank you. Yep, thank you very much, everyone, for your time. Okay, um, let's, uh, let's, let's do one more, and then let's do a, a break for, um, food and walking. Um, so if we go to calendar numbers 375-21-S and 376-21-S, and I believe we are still with Counselor Fatikas on these. Um, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the department's recommendation. And, uh, now that I'm paranoid, just someone let me know if I'm, uh, if my internet's not great. So, for 375-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to convert a proposed five-story mixed-use building with 24 dwelling units to a 27-dwelling unit residential building, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September 8th, 2021, prepared by Jonathan Split Architects Limited.
The Chairman, I'm sorry, do you want to, I, I think we can treat these cases together, even though they are separate applications?
Sorry about that. Um, it's the same applicant, uh, different property. So if it's okay with you, we do them together, but separate. Yep, cause I know they're, they're nearby as well, right?
They're, they're immediately adjacent to one another. Um, it's the same applicant, same witness team, so I'll do my best to keep them separate. If you have questions specific to one versus the other, please just let us know.
Perfect. Great. So I'm gonna read the recommendation for 376 as well. Um, so for 376-21-S, the Department of Planning and Development recommends approval to establish residential use below the second floor to create three live-work units with new mezzanine space on the ground floor to convert a proposed, proposed five-story mixed-use building with 24 dwelling units to a 27-unit residential building, provided that the development is consistent with the design and layout of the plans and drawings dated September 7th, 2021, prepared by Jonathan Split Architects LLC.
Okay, uh, Chairman, again, Nick Fatikas for the record. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and property owner, MB Narragansett LLC. Uh, the entity, that entity owns both the subject properties, six, I'm sorry, 6340 West Belmont and 3207 North Narragansett. Uh, both properties are currently under construction with a, a five-story mixed-use building that was originally intended to have retail space at grade and 24 units, uh, residential units above. Um, over the last year and a half, year, a little bit, between a year, year and a half, um, the applicant has had significant concerns about the viability of the retail component. There are a number of retail vacancies in the immediate area, and what we've done is we've worked with, um, the alderman's office so that our first floor of the Belmont Building, which sits to the east of the intersection, would be converted from retail space to three residential units. Then, in working with the alderman's office, we, uh, are proposing to convert the ground-floor retail space in the Narragansett Building at the hard corner of Narragansett and Belmont to three business live-work units. The alderman and some of the members of the immediate community had really asked that we keep or retain some type of retail component, and we thought that the live-work was probably the best option, offering the best of both worlds. Um, so just to be clear, the special use and permit for Belmont is for three ground-floor residential units. The special use and permit for the Narragansett Building is for three business live-work units. Okay? Uh, and with that, I have, um, and again, the reason special use is required is because both properties are located in a B3-3 zoning district. Um, I have three witnesses available to testify, uh, on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Bart Przemski, our, uh, M, our, our architect, Mr. Mark Mashansky, and our MAI appraiser, Mr. Terrance O'Brien. I'd also point out that these are special use applications. I don't necessarily need to call, uh, Mr. Mashansky, um, as the architect, but if there are questions about design, he is available to answer those questions. And do you want to swear in Bart, Mark, and Terry?
Yep, perfect. So Bart, will you please state your name and address, um, for the record?
Uh, here, my name is Bart Przemski, uh, with offices at 3901 25th Avenue in Silver Park.
Thank you. And do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Great. Okay, uh, Mark, will you do the same, please, and state your name and address?
Yes, my name is, uh, Mark Mashansky, uh, with Jonathan Split Architects. My address is 4001 North Ravenswood. That's Chicago, uh, Illinois, 606-13.
Thank you. And do swear or affirm to tell the truth in today's proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. Um, and finally, uh, Terrance O'Brien is sworn in and acknowledged for his expertise.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, Bart, again, you are the, uh, managing member of the applicant, MB Narragansett LLC, is that right? And you're proposing the development of both of the subject properties, is that right?
Yeah.
And as I stated in my introduction, what we're proposing to do now is replace the retail space originally proposed for the Belmont Building with three ground-floor residential units, is that right?
Correct, three units, so.
And then it would be a total of 27 residential units in that building, is that right?
Correct.
And it would be supported by 28 off-street parking spaces, correct?
Correct.
Um, shifting gears to Narragansett, similar concept, we're trying to, um, convert the retail space on the first floor of the building um, to three business live-work spaces, is that right?
Yeah.
And in this case, those three live-work units will be supported, uh, by one-to-one parking, correct?
They would, yeah.
And in, in fact, we, uh, the, the 27-unit total in that building will be supported by 28, uh, off-street parking spaces, right?
Correct.
And with respect to the live-work units, um, I, I want to make sure this is part of the record, Bart. You intend to take an active role in leasing or finding tenants for those units, right?
Yes, we want to go our building.
And what we want to do is avoid an issue where there is a tenant that brings undue noise, vibrations, or odors, or any other environmental condition that would impact the residential units above, is that right?
Correct.
And in most cases, or in cases in the past, we've seen a lot of office tenants look to take the space, is that right?
Yeah.
So something along the lines of a real estate broker, a mortgage broker, even, you know, an attorney, something along those lines.
Yes, correct.
And again, you're going to oversee the leasing for the entirety of the building. Great. If I can turn, if there are any questions for Mr. Prozchemski, otherwise, I can move on to Mr. Michalski.
Yep, you can keep going, Nick. We'll take group questions at the end.
Mark, again, you're a licensed architect in the state of Illinois?
Yes, I am.
You've testified in that capacity before this board, is that right?
Yes, I have.
In this case, we initially submitted findings of fact or witness statements that were signed by John Split, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
And you've read and reviewed both the findings and the witness statements?
Yes, I have.
And if, based on that, according, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and the witness statements provided and initially signed by Mr. Split, correct?
Yes.
And then with respect specifically to the Narragansett Building, is it your professional opinion that the proposed live-work unit will comply not only with the zoning requirements, but also the additional building code requirements for mixed-use occupancy?
Yes, they will.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien, you're familiar with the subject properties?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to make a comment before we continue, though. Subsequent to my submission of my report, there was a change in the configuration of the subject structures, both structures, on the ground floor. Instead of, at the time I prepared my report, I said there'd be four residential units. That's been amended by the developer. Now there's only going to be three residential units. As a result, the total number in the one building at 6340, total number of units is only 27. The same would apply to the building next door at the corner of Narragansett and Belmont. Change the first floor configuration such, there'll only be three work-life units. As a result, there'll only be 27 total units in the subject building in that case. So I just wanted to clarify that.
And again, in both cases, Terry, you were retained to determine whether the requested special use would meet the criteria for approval, is that right?
That is correct.
And with respect to the Belmont Building, the all-residential building, it's your position that the proposed residential units on the first floor would be consistent and compatible with the surrounding area and the neighboring improvements, is that right?
That's correct. In fact, the properties immediately to the east of that proposed building or building that's under construction, every one of them is residential in nature, and the ground floor is utilized for residential purposes. That's every structure at the east, which is approximately 13. Then to the north, you have the alley, and then you have additional residential uses.
And then with respect to the Narragansett Building, again, given the hard intersection of Narragansett and Belmont, you believe that the proposed live-work units, three total, are a consistent compatible use at that property?
Yes, for the same reasons stated herein for the other structure. The north side of Belmont Avenue is primarily residential in nature, and the proposed special use for the building at the corner there would be harmonious and compatible with other land uses in the area.
And really, in this case, it's intended to give a little bit of a marketing advantage to try and find and retain a retail tenant who could also live and occupy, live in the unit, again, in those, the Narragansett Building, is that right?
Yes, I foresee that any users or people would occupy these live-work units and be somewhat passive in natures, maybe a accounting office or something along those lines.
Okay, and Terry, is your understanding that we filed copies of your report for both cases with the zoning board?
That's correct, yes.
And if you were to continue to testify, your testimony would be consistent with the findings and conclusions contained in the report, is that right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Thank you. The only thing I conclude, before I conclude, Chairman, the only other thing is I want to make sure it's clear for the record that we did work with Alderman Vegas. We actually, as the development came online about 18 months ago, we hosted an open community meeting. There was no relief contemplated at that time, and we were not aware of any standing objection. We worked with the alderman as the changes came online over the last six months, and we believe we have general support, not aware of any objection for the proposal for, again, residential in the Belmont Building and that live-work element or component in the Narragansett Building.
Thanks, Counselor. That was my question, just because I know some modifications have been made over time with community input, aldermanic input. Any questions from the board? Okay, I think we have enough information here. So thank you very much, everyone, for your time. And we are, yeah, thank you very much. So we're going to now recess.
Thank you.
Lunch. Let's go 35 minutes, which brings us to, my math is right, 1:50 PM Central. So calling a recess to 1:50. Commissioner Toya Seconds, Commissioner Saul?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
I was about to say Commissioner Esposito, sorry. Commissioner Toya?
Yes.
Perfect. And I'm yes, so we are recessed. Did I miss anybody? Okay, good. Go to lunch, thanks.
Chairman, 1:50 PM, you said?
Yeah, 1:50 Kamal, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye.